Today's date is June 26, 2022, 6:30 PM. This meeting has been duly advertised in the city's newspaper and other outlets known as Sunshine Law.
Would you please stand for education?
No, no, roll call, roll call, excuse me.
Swan, here.
President.
Demolera.
Here.
Thomas.
President.
Cabona.
President.
Correa.
President.
Zishfro.
President.
All in attendance.
Entertainer motion to approve the previous minutes.
Motion.
Second.
No one favor?
Aye.
And now, now we have a presentation.
Public hearing for the neighborhood revitalization tax credit planning grant by Rattella Associates and Pleasantville Housing and Redevelopment Board.
Good evening, Mayor Councilman. Appreciate your attention tonight. Over the course of the last year, a committee that was established by the housing authority and by the city have been working on a redevelopment plan for the Midtown section of this city. And tonight, we'd like to update you and really give you a progress report on that effort. The Midtown area is generally bounded by Bayview Avenue to the south, Route 9 to the west, the Langsley Expressway to the north, and the Pleasantville boundary to east. We selected that area because it really is a part of the community. And the program that we are trying to access really requires areas that are mixed use, that have both commercial downtown areas primarily and residential. So, the program that we are pursuing is called the New Jersey Neighborhood Preservation Program. And it's a unique program that's being used now in 33 neighborhoods throughout New Jersey. What it does is it provides for up to a million dollars a year for neighborhood revitalization. 60% of the funds have to be used for residential and economic development improvements. The other 40% can be used for administration and other things. The challenge of this program is that it's really not a city program. It has to be sponsored on a nonprofit. And in our case, the housing authority has stepped up and they've been, they are the nonprofit that is supporting this. The other challenge is the money doesn't come from the state of New Jersey. It comes from corporations throughout New Jersey. And basically, corporations at the end of the year, instead of giving their tax dollars, our corporate tax dollars to the state of New Jersey, they direct those dollars to various neighborhoods throughout New Jersey. And many of the banks and major corporations throughout New Jersey have been doing this for years. And only recently, we've started to pursue this for the city of Pleasantville. So, that's part of the process. What we, what we have done is we held a public hearing, a public meeting last year. And we've had several focus groups. We have a very active committee. And if you wouldn't mind, I'd like to ask the committee members to stand up. We have several committee members here, as you can see. These folks have been meeting every month. And we've been meeting with all types of stakeholders, whether it be Atlantic City Community College, Atlantic Care, Sloughton University, New Jersey Economic Development Authority, the Improvement Authority, anyone that can help us, we've been engaging with. Thank you. And, and we've learned a lot. We're really, in Pleasantville especially, we're really building capacity. Because at the end, this is going to be a community-driven effort if we're successful. And so, we're really looking for partners who bring funding to the city. An example, we met with Atlantic City Community College. They had a keen interest in being involved in Pleasantville. To the point that we actually toured with them various sites for a satellite campus here in Pleasantville, someplace that's close to the bus station, close to public access, that could provide for English as a second language courses and workforce training and things of that nature. So, there are the kind of things that this can result in. The other thing is, we know we have, we have a lot of challenges in the community. We have over 1,000 homes in the, in the city area itself that are over, that were boarded, that were built before 1940. That means that they have, could have made paint, they could have made piping, and there are issues to be addressed. Revitalization of those homes is important. We have a high poverty rate. We have a, more than half of the homes are renter occupied as opposed to homeowner occupied. So, all those kinds of things are, are kind of issues that we wanted to identify so that we could identify the issues and we start to address them. Many of the things that the public talked about were, again, housing rehab, the downtown improvements, but also various training efforts and various beautification efforts as well. Crime and loitering and things of that nature were discussed and ways to address those. What we've done over the last year is how we've adopted, developed a plan that meets the state guidelines. And that plan will be sent to the state at the end of this month. It'll be reviewed by the state, they'll probably come down to meet with us. Because one of the, one of the things that's important to the state is that the community is behind us. And that's why we've been working so hard with, with representatives of the community. They want to know that the community has the capacity to do this, that has the support, and that we have one agenda to really make this neighborhood, improve the neighborhood. And then, probably by September, we'll know whether the plan's approved. And then, we can actually apply for funding at the end of this year. And actually, this time next year, we can start to make things happen. That's, that's the goal. We've been successful in this. You may have recently read in the paper that three neighborhoods in Atlantic City, we just started this effort a year ago, or in the last two years anyhow, have already garnered over two and a half million dollars for their neighborhoods. Same process. Different neighborhoods, different issues in each neighborhood. But their agenda is moving forward. And we hope to do the same thing here. And it's just going to take everyone working together. This is not a one-off option. This is something that really takes everyone. The state has been very supportive. We've had meetings with EDA, they've come down, they want to help Pleasantville. They want to get involved. They have special funding now, you know, the state's programs used to be for big projects. Now, they are focused on food deserts, which Pleasantville is number 25. Food, food deserts. Bringing fresh fruit and vegetables, bringing fresh food to, to the residents. Pleasantville is ranked number 25 in the state of New Jersey. That means that you have a priority on funding for improvements to that, to that process, whether it be new markets, new opportunities in the community, things of that nature. They met with us at the historic preservation. And they have a new program to, to actually, to help restore some of the buildings on Main Street. They met with us about small business opportunities that they have now. So, the state has kind of refocused their economic development interest to be more in line with what communities like Pleasantville need. So, they're the kind of efforts that we want to continue to work with. This also leverages the Neighborhood Preservation Program that Jackie Amada-Belton has been leading now for two years. And you've seen real improvements in the downtown as a result of that. The murals, the improvements to the bus station, the new plot there, all those things are part of the Neighborhood Preservation Program. So, we're trying to bring this all together and build on the city's successes and continue to, to work together. So, I'd be happy to answer your questions. I did provide a brief PowerPoint that kind of goes through the main points that we just talked about. But I'd be happy to answer any questions or field your comments if you'd like.
I like the emphasis on hazards. I like the emphasis on making us, giving us ability to have ownership in various areas, you know. And I thank you for, thank you for this program. Thank you for bringing in this program. There's much need. And your comment of adding to what we have already done, it's like taking every time pushing for a re-profits plan, what city you're calling it.
It's a lot of work. And, and, but you're right, you have to build on, you do it one block at a time. This is not something, you know, it's, it has to be strategic and we can make an effort. And this is, this is the kind of tool that I think Pleasantville really needs.
I do have a question. I mean, is there anywhere that we can have a conversation later on, you know, outside of here? Because there are some things that I feel that aren't on here that might need to be addressed.
Definitely. And I should have said that at the onset. This is really the first phase.
Yes.
You know, you have to have a big picture.
Yeah, because you've got to make sure that everybody is taking care of, you know, the community, not just one segment. You want to make sure that everybody is.
Most definitely. And, and there's going to be other opportunities, as, as you just suggested, you know, we can certainly meet with you or a committee of council to, to talk about those opportunities.
Sure.
Question.
Jessica.
What is involved with the facade improvement? We have done facades before in the past. And what would you, what's the recommendation? Where would it be and what would it entail?
Well, you know, facades can be both residential and commercial. Doesn't just have to be businesses, you know, to really beautify. We do have guidelines that were provided to us by the state that all the communities that are in the Neighborhood Preservation Program are to follow. So, we have a nice template to work from that provides good guidance. One of the few things that we need to decide on the facade program, and this, this comes later, is, you know, what, what portion of the funding does the public provide? What portion does the private sector provide? You know, in some communities, it's 50% grant, 50% match. It could be 70% grant and a match. But that, those types of things, because you want the business owner to have skin in the game and be a partner in this. But, you know, there's, there's a process that's really made out for that and for us to at least start from. And that, that's really part of our next phase. The next phase, you know, once, once our plan's approved, when we put together actually an application, we're going to be looking at, you know, what exit should be in that application and how those programs like homeownership, housing rehab, facade improvements should be designed. So, there's, there's, there's a lot of ways that we can, we can look on that.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks very much.
Jim.
Yes.
I'd like to say thank you for your commitment in doing this. Jim is our grant writer. And for seeking the grants that you do. And for everyone that's here that's on the committees, I thank you for being so committed to coming to all the meetings, you know, not many, it's not many of you that's missed any of the meetings. You come, you come with your enthusiasm and your ideas. Everyone that was selected to be on the committees or S committee, please. And I appreciate that. And Atlantic ACCC, I'm really excited about. I did see them today too. And that I'm excited about what they're saying that they want to do on Main Street in Pleasantville. So, you know, I'm just, I'm excited about it all. And once it starts happening, we just have to get the money, get the funds.
Yep. That's the next challenge. Thank you, Mayor.
Yes.
One other thing, there are, what we're trying to do is, as part of this whole effort, is continue to build pride in the community. Small token that we have today for everyone here are these tote bags. You know, it talks about the Midtown revitalization, has a sponsor's name. And, you know, basically, you know, this whole effort about, you know, for tote bags, it's, it's producing litter in the neighborhoods. And you have blowing plastic bags, that was, that's been our trademark for a long time, not in Pleasantville, but everywhere. Now, that's gone. And we have something that takes its place. So, we wanted to provide this as a gift, just to kind of start to build pride and to, to let people know about this effort. We did provide these, I know they're at City Hall. We also provided them to the supermarket on South Main Street. So, that, you know, also, the other thing we want to do as part of this effort is, as the councilman mentioned, is bringing the whole community together. This is not, you know, someone's, one person's plan. This is a community plan. And the more we can have people involved, the better off we'll be. So, that's part of this, this effort. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next is Jim, your review.
Okay, first one is Jim. I'm sorry. Do the public have an input? They don't have to.
Next is Jim.
First, draw the agenda orders number nine, second reading, public hearing will be held for regular session, suspended orders number one dash 2022.
Speaking of hazard, hazard things, we were in, we were in a position where we had to do something with our system. We were running to our hazard with our system and our health and safety issues. If you don't do anything with outdated system and you sit back and wait with our terracotta pipes and things of that nature, you just wait for a major problem to take place. So, then was brought to us three, almost three years ago, the prospect of selling our system. And we did good during that time. We didn't fold our city up by selling our system to New Jersey American Order and also we were essentially would be doubling on our rates. We did good. We saved, we saved us, we saved us from that embarrassment. So, now, we go through two and, two and a half years of negotiations. Reform committee, our committee, obviously, was our administrator and our CFO and our mayor, councilman, that report, councilman's partner, so on. And we negotiated the contract in two and a half years. Two and a half years, we did the very best we possibly can. And we can be proud. We can be proud because the deal we got and we made is 16 times better than what we would have had. And it adds to this time, or the health and safety time we're trying, it's, it's that much better. We keep our state name, federating state grants and federal grants. We were able to put in this 15, 15 million dollars for bills and responsibilities, 10.9 in the waterfront area, area where we haven't been able to build for 20 some odd years. It's something to stick your chest out, be proud of. Be proud that, that not only we saved it, but we also found out, found something that is extremely better. The last thing I want to do is to be foreclosing our city within LACP. It's convention, coming in time. That would be the last thing we want to do. This is what we did and was voted on. The voting on, if you do a parade, if there was a parade or something like that, the event that took place yesterday, it would have, it would have taken one vote. But this one in particular took five votes, five votes, seven zero, seven zero, seven zero, by, by your council. Sign and seal, deliver. By your mayor.
Sign, sign, sign.
Sign, seal, deliver. By your mayor. By your mayor. This, these things that Mr. Rattella was talking about, we had good things to work with, the building behind us, the library, schools that we built in the past 20 years, all of these things, I hope six, we did them, we did them with a council that did its due diligence and negotiated the good faith. This, this motion that we have on right now, the motion that was put on by the councilwoman and said, yeah, would, would us in jeopardy. And I have an obligation, Rattella, we don't need injunctions. We don't need lawsuits, damages, claims, things that we couldn't, that, that we can't pay, bankruptcy, and moving our city backwards. We have responsibility to move our city forward. So, I just want to put that as a record. There's a record on the record, council president, that the motion shouldn't have ever been made in the first place.
It's not for you to say.
It is, it is.
Not for you to say.
It is.
Not for you to say.
And, and to remind my, my council up here that we have a responsibility to keep our city out of jeopardy. Just out of jeopardy. When the administrator can give, when the administration can give you a package for, for a dump station, or that you call it a dump, that's what you call it? You call it a dump station? No, it's, it's our transfer station.
That has dump.
To remind us, to remind us what we had done for that, it applies to all the things that we've done in the past and the ones that we have on the table, on the table right now. Thank you.
Okay. Next. Next is ordinance number 10, second reading, public hearing will be held for regular session. Is provided for the impoundment and forfeiture of all terrain vehicles and dirt bikes operated on public streets, highways, or right-of-way in violation of NJSA 39 tolling 3C dash 17.
Any questions? Next.
Orders number 11, first reading, establishing and adopting a complete green streets policy.
Any questions?
Can you explain that, please? Somebody?
So, ordinance number 11, establishing and adopting a complete and green streets policy in addition to resolutions number 127, 128, and 129, and 130. They are all sustainable Jersey resolutions, trustee ordinance, to support the city's application for our sustainable Jersey application, which would help us get points for grants as it relates to sustainability. Ordinance number 11, establishing and adopting a complete and green streets policy, just, I guess, provides the city an opportunity to make sure that any time that we do any type of complete streets or any type of street programming that we encourage our vendors, our contractors, our workers, and the city to apply sustainability policies and practices. In addition to that, as I stated, the other resolutions, they're all named differently, but they all are to encourage the practice of sustainability and a green city. They're all resolutions and grants that has been provided to us by our grant writer that is here today, Jim Vitale, again, to help us get more points for our sustainable Jersey application that will help us get further funding for any type of grants that, as it pertains to sustainability.
So, the chair. Does that mean you want to survive that?
I'm sorry, they have questions.
What committee did this go through?
It does, it's an administrative item.
So, it did, they didn't have to?
I mean, because you wanted to, but typically, because it supports an application that you've been a part of for many years.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a question. So, this would align perfectly for the road work and the infrastructure work that we're planning on doing, right?
Yes.
And with grants and things.
If you do any type of reconstruction or construction work, we're just, you know, encouraging our vendors and our contractors to use products that are sustainable and to other practices that are sustainable.
Any more questions? Any more questions?
Resolution 123, approval of the renewal of primary retail distribution license for 2022 through 2023.
Any questions?
Resolution 124, approval of the renewal of primary retail distribution licenses for 2022 to 2023 term.
Any questions?
Resolution 125, provided for budget insertion into the 2022 budget.
Does someone explain this, please?
Where are you wanting to go? Yes. So, this is a budget insertion for the Clean Communities Grant that we also are eligible for each year. Typically, we utilize the money to help offset costs for their jokers as they do clean litter collection projects throughout the city. We utilize it to get equipment, bags, trash bags, these, you know, school things sweep up and all those things. So, we're a part of Clean Communities. This is our allotment for this year. And again, part of the 38,000 we usually allocate to the jokers organization during their semester.
Thank you.
Resolution 126, authorizing the city to execute agreement with Exon Enterprises Incorporated for body cameras.
Any questions?
Yeah, I think it's, like, Chief, you want to talk about this?
Maybe you should have the police chief also up here.
Yeah.
Can you talk about, talk about the labor? Body cam cameras. We, we applied for a grant to get 13 more cameras. Twenty-three. Twenty-three. I'm sorry, 23 more cameras, which will outfit the police department from me all the way down to the lowest patrol. When we initially got 50 more cameras, we got 40. We only had 40. But then, when the laws change and everything like that, we had to change too. So, the, the five-year grant, it did additional body cameras, like I said, from police chief all the way down to the lowest patrol.
And the grant, that $48,000, the first year, for this, 66. So, obviously, that 48,000 will offset that greatly. The nice thing about the body cameras is every 25 months, 30 months, all the body cameras are automatically replaced. The software to store the equipment is out, is unlimited in cloud. So, that was kind of the biggest cost involved with, with all this. This state, I think, script, they would tell you that the state changed the rules as far as how long you can keep evidence. They expanded out beyond, I think, 60 days, now it's 180 days. So, we need the storage in, in the cloud. So, this is really a five-year contract for the body cams that are replaced every two and a half years. And then, with storage that's required by the state.
Any questions?
Yes.
Is that extra cost, I mean, 200 views also?
No, there's no extra cost every two and a half years. We will pay $66,000 a year, starting next year, for the services, software, and storage. And then, in two and a half, in 30 months, really, all the cameras are replaced free of charge.
Okay.
And then, at the end of five years, all the cameras replaced free of, free of charge.
All right. But 66,000 every year?
Yeah.
You said 62 or 66?
Sorry?
Did you say 62 or 66?
66.
So, it's a recurring cost every year of 66,000.
Like I said, the first year, we got a grant for $48,000. Hopefully, we can get, set that'll continue in the following years. We'll apply for grants to offset that cost. But we had, I think, in the budget, we had like 45,000 this year for 40 cameras. The cost was 66, that's the 48. So, we're really saving money this year to begin with. We're hoping grants can be obtained in the future. We're doing the same type of thing.
Are they mandatory? Are cameras being integrated?
For everybody.
Question. So, I see that this grant is for 46,000?
Forty-six, is it 46, 40?
And it says, just to assist for the first year?
The 66, the 66,000 the cost, we have a grant, offset that, 46 or order 48 or 46,000 are going to be that number. So, it's a good cost. So it's a good cost, between 18 and 20,000.
So it all comes out of our pocket?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Any more questions? Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, I have another question there. I see on the last page of this, it says that they're going to give us a credit of 20,000? Or a refund?
That's based on their old amount. They were going to charge us beyond, I guess because of the way the contract ran, runs, they're reducing, they're giving us a credit, $20,000 that we spread out over five years. So because of, we already paid some of the, when we paid last year, it took into this year. So they're giving us a credit for the payment for 22, which we spread out over five years. So the 20,000, there's five years, really the number, I mean, like, should be around $71,000.
But why is it you have to pay invoices?
Pay who?
Anvoices?
The difference?
It says any outstanding invoices?
Well, there are no outstanding invoices. That's the credit. They're giving us a credit because there should be outstanding invoices for the difference of credit against that portion of the contract.
Any more questions?
Resolution 127, endorsing the adoption of green building practices specific to commercial and residential properties.
Any questions?
Resolution 128, endorsing sustainable land use pledge.
Any questions?
Resolution 129, adopting green grounds and maintenance policy.
Any questions?
Resolution 130, supporting the New Jersey's Wildlife Action Plan.
Any questions?
Yeah, that's part of sustainable Jersey as well. That's basically saying that we will protect and preserve the wildlife in our wetlands area, so we will make every effort to make sure that plants and other organisms are being protected as we build.
So, question before we move on to this. I know Mr. Davenport had talked to the developer over there, and they were talking about a fishing pier and a crabbing pier. That doesn't affect that?
No, it does not. Because any development will still have to follow all their DEP rules and regulations.
Those are the locations, but the nature walks, right? The nature observation. Any more questions?
Next is review of the bill list.
I'm going to apologize, Mr. Tom. The number is 62,000 a year. I'm thinking 66, because we renegotiated with it a few times. We filed the original number, we talked about 66,000 a year. We've made some changes in negotiation, it gets down to 62,000, which is where the contract is. That's where your $20,000 credit, you can go.
Thank you.
So it's five times what you say.
Right. Before I start the bill list, I know that, I know we went out for bids for infrastructure, borrowing $2.5 million. We got bids in last Wednesday. There was bids ranging from 4.1 down to 2.67. Obviously, we're taking 2.67 interest rate, talking to my bond people, this is the lowest rate. They had seen it over a month for bonds. One, it says a lot for the city political and our financial stability, the fact that we're not in debt in any kind of way beyond normal stuff. So it's, it's a successful bidder with envoy back out of North Jersey. Like I said, we'll have the money here next week, but the rate is, especially depending, you know how to work it out right now, 2.67% interest rate is an outstanding rate.
It makes it an update.
Part of my job. We're going to build the bills that were repaid between this council meeting and this one. If you look at my check date by register, you'll see 16,750. If you've been down to the direct center, you'll see they're all new windows down to the recreation center. They look great. That was done, and you know, finished it up last week. And then the other two bills are, near the end of wire transfers, $563,000 for payroll from last week. And then medical insurance for retirees and active employees of 428 for the month. If we go into bills, looking to be approved this time, you'll see about two-thirds of the way down, Barker, Granland, James, et cetera, et cetera, for the amount of $12,288. We've had a lot of labor concerns and situation in the last six weeks for both police and fire department for certain employees. So this is covering that, plus there's been a couple arbitration hearings regarding that. Councilman Crede asked me about it today. We have one more bill coming in that I saw of like 1,300 hours. Hopefully, that will take care of everything that's been going on.
So how many cases would you say is this cause?
There are at least four employees. Top of page two.
Excuse me, I have a question. Maybe I'll come ask you tomorrow, but is there any way we can get a list of all the cases that we have pending or outstanding? Is that possible?
First of all, they're not cases.
Well, that's what he.
I know. I'm just clarifying. They're matters. There's a difference between that and cases. Secondly, we will, we'll be able to share that with you in a private setting, but Public Safety Committee was updated on these labor matters.
I'm sorry, to me, a lawyer is always a case. Top of page two, you'll see Landon County Treasurer. This is for our gas tanks that we've been using for the county, filling up our trucks and our vehicles. You'll see that's quite a jump from last month. The result is, because of, obviously, we all see that in the pump, but the gas price that they're charging us went down three cents. Diesel prices went up a buck twenty a gallon. How much you a third of the way down on, you'll see Cooper Levinson for Savage, that was an escrow payment.
How many diesel trucks do we have?
I think we have, I believe, two down Public Works, and a couple of fire trucks are also diesel. Obviously, tractors diesel, and some of the, I think one of the bigger dump trucks is diesel also. Cooper Levinson, that was from escrow, that was part of the Savage redevelopment plan on California Avenue.
Barry, if you can stay on this page, it says the fourth one down, is reimbursement for medical. How come it's going back to February, February 8th?
Well, he, he bills us on a quarterly basis. This is, most of our retirees that pay monthly, he pays his bill quarterly, so we reimburse them on a quarterly basis, rather than monthly. And you'll see that the first bill does every month, you'll see all the employees that we bill on a monthly basis. You go down on page three, the third one down, Martin Appreval. As you know, we talked about the Greenwood Nursing matter last month. This was the cost of the appraisal, we went to tax court and settled the case. We're on page four. You'll see, three quarters of the way down, you'll see Jim Rattolo. Very solid, Jim. I normally don't pay him right away. I usually hold my bill off for Jim. And this is, this is five months worth of bills that we're paying right now.
Five months?
Five months. He's not asking for it over one year or something. No, he's, he understands where we are financially, and he's willing to let it sit a little bit until we pay.
I have a question. Since you skipped the spy class, what is going down?
That is, I don't know why I skipped that one, that will do nothing. That is the redevelopment of Joker's Field and Marina. We have a contract with them for the redevelopment of that area. A lot of the costs are professionals for environmental stuff, landscape design, the whole nine yards. We have, we will pay out of the grant once we get, that'll be reimbursed once we get the grant in. The 2.2 million dollars is set aside for us, I think 1/6 of the grant, $600,000 is our cost, but we will, that, most of that will be reimbursed once we get the grant in and the work gets started, which we're all anxious to do. I mean, everything from the dredging to the whole Joker's Field, old Joker's Field landscape program.
Can I follow up on that? Is that, if we're paying for this and we're getting, and we're getting reimbursed from the grant, but is that developer putting any skin in the game too with this? Is there?
No, he's doing the work.
He's doing the work.
He's doing, he's doing the work on Joker's Field.
He's doing the work in building us.
He's doing the work for OBEF. He's doing the planning and the development, getting the architects, getting engineers on OBEF.
Question also on the dredging.
Say it again. I'm sorry. What about it? We're working towards our lines, as you said in the planning and development meeting, we were hoping for July. Yeah, we're, yeah, we're talking about September based on our permitting issues, but we're trying to make sure that it happens this year, right? We're doing our best.
Not to just talk about supply, but also talk about the dredging.
Well, question, and I guess it probably was discussed in your committee, but is it possible if all of us can get something like timeline or of what has been done already on this project?
You can produce that.
Thank you.
Page five, halfway down, you'll see the June school tax of 798. Two below that, you'll see Premier Orthopedic Sports. You'll see 2021 COVID testing. There was, we've been in discussion with them, we looked like we were getting a lot of duplicate bills for when we first went in on COVID 2021. We've been hassling back and forth with them for a year and a half. We've reached an agreement where these were bills were not paid, these were covered by the insurance, and so this is the number where $18,000 is probably almost years of COVID testing. And when we first had COVID, we were sending out people eight, 10, 12 at a time because we wanted to make sure they were COVID-free, or if they were tested, we'd get a check. They had to be set up for a while. But like I said, something, someone's covered by insurance, we see, we thought there were a lot of duplication bills, as I did, we were, we were going back and forth with these for a long time until we, I was satisfied that these were not duplicates or covered by the insurance.
So this is an outside company that's outside of our insurance plan?
Yeah.
So how come they didn't go, I mean, this is a lot for us to take on if they chose not to go to our regular doctor or go for insurance. I just don't understand, like, how do we get a bill that big? I know when I took my COVID test, my insurance paid because I went through the proper channel, so, you know, how come it wasn't done in that manner?
Well, Steph, I don't know why this started this way. I know that it was set up by, I think, emergency management.
I'll explain, Barry. Okay. So initially, I guess in 2020, when we first got hit with the pandemic, there was scarcity in getting these COVID tests. It became, you know, available to us later on, but initially, we couldn't get our employees in. So we searched under our O E M team, they searched, and they came up with this premier facility that made themselves accessible just for our folks, so that they can get in at any time. Since then, because we have the availability now to get, like you said, testing anywhere, we're weaning ourselves off of this. So these are, most of these are old bills. Any employees now that are, need to be tested, or new hires that need to be tested, we're sending them to other facilities, whereas their insurance would cover, or they're getting free testing.
Did the price of the COVID test change higher during that? I just don't understand.
The problem with that, try to see, a lot of it is, is because when you have an exposure, you have to get multiple people tested, so that becomes your cost issue.
And that's where probably the fire department, the police department, they work so closely together. And you know, you got someone in the fire department, you may have nine people that go out and get tested, because they're close proximity that they are on a daily basis.
Question.
Yes.
So Barry, here, you're talking about insurance. So in the beginning, the employees did not use their insurance, or did they use their insurance?
Some of them were accepted because they didn't have our insurance, maybe their own insurance took care of it, and, but it was.
It was case by case.
It was scarce.
So we kind of got a grip on it after we got, kind of figured out what was going on, but...
No, I understand. I'm sorry to cut you off. I understand that you're saying that you all, you know, you know, caught on to it, but Premier knew how to bill when our employees were going there, so that's why I'm not understanding why is it that $18,000?
Well, first of all, you have to determine how many people this is, how far it goes back. You can't just look at this lump sum number and make a determination that it's high.
But that's what we have in front of us.
Well, that's, we need to get additional information so we can understand what we're doing here.
So could we pull this until we get the additional information?
If you like.
And initially, those tests were very expensive because they were so rare and you couldn't buy them, you know, so if you had a test, it was a buyer's market, and they could get whatever the going price was. It was commonplace.
Yeah, but they always built your insurance.
We'll get the breakdown and then you guys can decide.
Okay. Hey, boy. Go ahead. Would you really?
So, excuse me, I have a question. Are we going to table this or not? I know the question was told by Councilman Congress. Are we taking this?
I mean, I would like.
Trust the administration gave us the breakup of it afterwards, the bill needs to be paid.
It's not a problem. We can get your information, you can table it.
But I'm sorry, but can I also add that if we can look at our COVID test policy that we have in place now?
Look at it, you do, what am I looking for?
Is it the same? I mean, I really don't know the.
The policy doesn't reflect what the insurance is. So let's, let's.
What I'm saying is, so if someone's positive, is there some type of policy saying that you got to go to Premier?
It's not saying you have to go to Premier, but it has the, the language and the procedure in place for what they have to do and what the city has to do. There's a clear policy, you can get a copy of the policy.
Okay.
Thank you.
Couple down beyond that, beyond that is the Royal Printing Service, I believe this is for our ballots for, that we use for the election. All the ballots are mailed out. And then if you go to, actually, this, the last one, well, I'm sorry, we'll go to page six, you'll see toll striping. There was some striping done, I believe it's on Franton and Doll Road, where there wasn't really any kind of markings in line in the road, so we made some markings, so hopefully it'll be safer for people by on Doll Road. Other than that, all the other bills are our normal operating bills, and I think procedurally, if you, when we go to approve the bill list, you'll just say yes, except for Premier, and that will be taken.
Question, Barry, you just said the $18,000 was for the ballots. Did we get reimbursed for that?
The city's responsible for all the ballots and election.
What an election.
No, no, no. May I, may I point to it again? All ballots and printing of the ballots and sample ballots, it's all responsible to municipal.
I mean, it's been going up every year.
I just have the same question. I thought Board of Election would be responsible for that.
No, the Board of Election's responsibility is regarding your poll workers and poll locations. The vet of the ballots and election items are actually under the Landon County clerk. And the superintendent of elections is responsible for registering the voters, but all municipalities are responsible for the ballots, just the material. Just saying, other material associated with it.
And I have one other question on page six. It says Apple iPad. What function was that for?
Which one?
Page six. The second one there?
That is for, I'm looking for.
Please?
Traffic safety. We have a laser system for doing investigations for fatal crashes and also when there's a paid license in the city, this laptop is to control the software for that system. Roll that laptop with tablet.
Give me more questions.
My next is public portion on agenda items only. Please start rolling. Questions on that, it's in the main. There's three minutes left.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Tim Jones Pleasantville, and I just stand here to support ordinance nine, which is the rescinding of ordinance one in February. I'm glad we're moving forward with progress for Pleasantville, and thank you very much for your considerations of the matter, especially you, Councilwoman Fanning Lara.
I have David Bowman, East Flora Avenue, Pleasantville. I just have a question about ordinance number nine, which is in the second reading. Will there be opportunity for public comment during the regular meeting?
Yes, indeed.
Thank you.
Jerome Page, 213 West Pleasant Avenue, Pleasantville. I do have a question on, on ordinance nine, but you did say that it is open publicly when it's closed issue. I'll hold my comments for that.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Dale Archie, President of Pleasantville, Lincoln Avenue. I am in favor of rescinding of ordinance number nine. Also, I'd like to ask the police chief a question in reference to five. These motorcycles or dirt bikes being impounded, what happens once they impound it? Will they be destroyed? These are the questions. City of Philadelphia had a problem with dirt bikes, and what happened was they were impounding vehicles, motorstikes, dirt bikes, whatever. Afterwards, somebody else survived and went, went right back on the street. So what is, once they get impounded?
Once they get impounded, they go to the tow yards, they do what they do with them. We have no control of that. So to your, to your question, if they go to a tow yard, they're auctioning off. So we have no control of that. But what we're trying.
I see where you're going, right?
Yeah, I, I understand completely, you know, where you're going. One thing that I do want to address with the community here with, with respect to these, these dirt bikes and stuff like that, when we impound these, the dirt bikes and we move and seize them, it's not going to be one of these deals where we see a young man standing in front of his house and there's a dirt bike and we're just going to come up there and take the dirt bike. It's going to be, because there's a public safety issue that's happening, like we have here all the time, they're riding wheelies down the street and stuff like that. And we can prove through an investigation that this type of activity is going on when we see this person and this bike again, then we will tow the bike and then seize it.
Excuse me. Yes, chief, I have a question. You just said that it goes to the impound yard or the, you said impound yard, right?
Yeah.
And they auction them off?
I'm not sure what they, what they do with them from there.
The reason why I'm asking, if they do auction them off, then who gets the profit from it? Does Pleasantville get it or, you know, how does that work? I think that's something that we need to look into.
Sure. I'm not, I don't have the answer to that, and I don't want to give in for me.
Good, so I'll, I'll hear from you. Thanks.
Thank you, council persons. Thank you for your service. Thank you for your time. My name is Jose David Alcontra. Some of you know me, I'm an attorney also. And I'm in favor of the ordinance that would get stopped that contract with that sewer. The reason why I say it that way is because maybe some of the people listening don't know which means what. And I believe it's number nine anyway. So I just really think it's, it's, there are better alternatives. Thank you.
Any questions?
My name is David Carrington, and I am a resident of Pleasantville, and I am in favor of rescinding ordinance number nine. Thank you very much, Ms. Fanning Lara.
Good evening, council president, members of council, mayor, the administrator. Regarding ordinance number 10, I'm in favor of that ordinance. I can tell you by building, my office is at 129 South Main Street, and I see these dirt bikes and ATVs not only driving and doing wheelies on the street, which is bad enough because they're causing a public safety issue there, but also driving literally on my sidewalk. I have on my cameras, have copies of videotapes, I pass on the information when I have, when I get it. There are not just a menace, there are health, safety, and welfare and quality of life issues involved with these individuals that are driving these bikes, many of whom aren't even from Pleasantville. And additionally, if there is a way for us to destroy the bikes, I think that's, that's something we should explore. We should absolutely explore destroying the bikes.
Absolutely.
The other thing is, along the same lines, I can't take credit for this idea. It's a retired battalion chief from this fire department that is a resident in the south side of Pleasantville. His suggestion is to actually consider passing in ordinance where gas stations in Pleasantville, if they're observed dispensing gas directly into these dirt bikes and ATVs, they get penalized. And if you, if you start attacking the stores of how they can operate, they don't have gas.
Point taken, public, chairman of public safety.
Can I ask you a quick question? Because I talked to a lot of those kids that do ride the bikes and try to dissuade them, no, persuade them not to do it. And they're asking constantly, like, where can we go ride? So have we done anything to try to find a spot for them? Because I know out in Harbor Township, they have a place for their kids to do it. All right? And our kids, from what I'm hearing from them, is that when they go out there, they turn away. So I think that we as a city need to work and see if we could do something to accommodate that, you know, get them off the streets, number one, but if we could find someplace for them, you know, I think it would be a win-win situation.
Yeah, I mean, that is a good idea, but I, I think that's beyond me as the, as the police chief. I, I think that's something that you guys would have to come up with because you need a space within the city. And I mean, the city of Pleasantville is only so big.
Yes.
So.
Well, I'm asking you because you are the chief, we're going to need your input on this.
That's not a topic to, don't even try.
And one of my neighbors' meetings, I, I mentioned that because I was saying, well, we, because I have, I, we discussed, and I did discuss it with you too, chief, after Mr. Diego told me the first time about the dirt bikes and all. But I mentioned it at the meeting, and I said, we going about places, but we don't have anywhere in Pleasantville to go ride them. I said, but if we had a place, I just think they wouldn't be on the streets. And there was each, any HD mayor there, and he said, it won't make a difference, mayor. He said, because we have a place for them to go ride. And they do it anyway. He said, they just love the, you know, just be, the risky part of being able to ride in the street.
Yes. I apologize. I don't know if my three minutes is up.
Just reminded council and mayor after this, this public portion still.
And I apologize, I don't know if my three minutes are up, but I, I'll echo what the mayor said. And the reality is, we all know that some of the guys like to do their donuts in front of the police station, in front of the fire department, flip off the officers, drive around the vehicles. They're not doing it because they want a place to ride. They're doing it because they get a thrill out of it. Okay? If they really wanted to just ride, there is a five mile meadow between here and Atlantic City. Do wheelies until your heart's content.
They do.
Yeah, well, then save it. But the reality is, they, they like the, the idea that, you know, they're going to do what they want to do, when they want to do it. It's a culture. They like to videotape themselves, and they don't care. They don't care about the rest of the 20,000 citizens of this city. They just care about flipping people off.
Thank you. Anyone else from the board?
Urban Moreno Rodriguez, 730 New Maple Road, Pleasantville, New Jersey. I heard what the lawyer John Diego was saying and what you were saying, city council, and I have a perfect site for this motorbike. I think it's 11 Devon's Avenue, Pleasantville, New Jersey. The side of the proposed dump station, right? But I hope we explore that option because the community does not want that site here in Pleasantville, New Jersey. And I just want to take the time to publicly state that I support ordinance number nine. And I want to also publicly thank from the bottom of my heart the bravery of, of Councilwoman Fanning Lara. But it's also not beneath me to thank Councilman Swan, Councilman Carrera, and of course you, Councilman Carrera, for your votes. And so, thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Anyone else from the board?
Good evening. My name is David Carrington, resident of Pleasantville. I also support ordinance number nine rescinding the ordinance as it is written. Number 10, thank you, Ms. Fanning Lara and everyone else. Leeds Avenue has suffered with these motorbikes. After school, during our camp program, our afternoon pre-K program, in the back portion of the school playground area, they, these guys see fit to run in between the children, all right, during this time. I agree with Brother Diego. They are a menace. There's plenty of places to ride. They doing it because they just don't care about the civilians, they don't care about life. Okay? There is a spot, who bought, I don't know who brought up the, the metal area.
Can you explain what you meant again? What do you mean run in between the children?
They come, if they come on school property, and while the children are outside playing, they run their motorbikes and their four-wheelers around the children. Okay? So school is over. So I hope that in September, October, when these programs start, start back up again, we won't have this issue. But yes, these motorbikes, these four-wheelers are, were running in between the children, around the children on both playgrounds, the, the blacktop and the field.
Did you, was it for, did you show, chief, did you help acknowledge this place?
This is the first I've heard of that right there, but I, I do know that these dirt bikes and quads, just like you said, Mr. Carrington, they're a problem. And when the police are called, we certainly come there, but they want us to come there too. You know, when they see us there, they want to taunt us, they want us to chase them. And you know, and I have to tell everybody here, as much as you don't want to hear that, my officers are not going to chase these dirt bikes because I'm not going to, you know, have the city, you know, put in a position with a lawsuit, you know, when one of them run into a car or try to cross the Black Horse Pike trying to, you know, get away from us and get killed, you know, and then, and then they're going to come at, you know, after the police department in the city. We try to do the best we can, you know, with these dirt bikes. We come around there, you know, and try to just get them to just move to another area. But they want us to chase them.
Your guys did do that on one occasion, and they left, and then they came back. Okay, so that's a problem.
It's a problem, and we're trying, and that's why we're trying to, you know, put this ordinance out, that at least when we get these bikes, we will never give them back because the practice that we were doing now, when we seize these dirt bikes or when we take them, they come in with the proper documentation and we give them back, and what do they do? Go right back out there and do what they were doing right before.
Do they get fined?
Yeah, they'll get, they'll get tickets and things like that, but that doesn't stop anything. That's just like your scooter in a park.
I have a great idea, that maybe if we find these gas stations who put the gas in these motorbikes, right, maybe a curtail. I think I came up with that first, Mr. Diego.
I wanted to say about, I'm sorry, Nate Brown, Adams Avenue, Pleasantville. I wanted to say about this ordinance, about these dirt bikes and stuff. These kids are riding and popping wheelies in the middle of traffic on Main Street. They don't, they do not wear helmets or any protective gear. Sometimes they have riders on the back.
Yes.
And I am petrified going down Main Street sometimes. They, they don't care because every couple of years, one of their friends die on these dirt bikes, doing what they're doing. So is there any way you could change the law so that you don't have to wait to have to have an investigation to prove that they're endangering lives, which you know the first time you see them? That they just can't ride it on the street at all and if they're seen riding it on the street, that they'll be confiscated? Why, why does it have to be so complicated?
That's what the ordinance is for. That's what this does.
No, you.
I know what you're saying, and, and that's on a state level. You know, we, we cannot, you know, enact that type of law. You know, that comes from lawmakers. But, you know, I've been kind of reserved, you know, I wasn't going to say this, but I think what would really help here is every one of these kids, you know, a lot of them young adults too, that are riding these dirt bikes, they go home somewhere, you know. There's just as many people in here that are upset about the dirt bikes being on the street. There's even more people that know exactly where they live, where they're coming from, and they're not saying anything. If we can get to these people, you know, maybe we can make a difference.
I don't know where they go. A lot of those, they ride up and down my street all day, all day.
I mean, I hear your frustration.
And she's mentally retarded now from being hit by one of these things. Okay, so this is not a joke. This is like real deeply serious.
Absolutely, absolutely. You know, I mean, we see it. It's like the young man that was killed right here on the bike path in Route 9. I know everybody knows about it.
Yeah, I know his mother was on fire.
Yeah, but that's, that's what I'm saying. These, these kids go somewhere every night and park these bikes. People know where they live, and nobody wants to say anything. Nobody wants to be labeled a snitch and things like that. But then we get the concerned citizens such as yourself and many others in here, you know, bring this point up, but there's just as many people out there know what they're doing and they're not saying a word.
Well, I don't know that. If I did, I would tell you.
I believe you.
Because I have grandchildren. So I would definitely tell you, I don't know them. I know him, but I didn't know he was doing that until he got there. Because I certainly would have, had memory told his mother. So I just wanted to say that I didn't know if you could do something about not having to wait to catch them again riding and, and then chasing them and, and taking the bike. You know what I mean? I thought that maybe you could do it the first time. So.
Just want to add something Tony had said to the police officer. When you take the bike away from them and give them a ticket, is the address on the ticket? So you already know where you got to go. And you got to talk to the parents, the guardians. They must know because if it happens again, guess who's going to give a ticket?
The parents.
The parents. Because they're under age.
Most of them are.
Well, you know, the second time, you get.
Not really, not these days.
Well, I'm just saying, but what I hear, I think the school system can do something more about it too. We have a parent center now where we're focusing on bringing more parents in and really getting to know them and their children. We have a bad middle school fights every day, you know, okay? So we're trying as a board, we're trying to educate the parent, bring them in. It's a parent center. It's not so much of a school, it's, it's in a trailer. But we need to teach the parents and show the parents what we need, and, because their parents are angels, their kids are angels to them. Okay? And when they come in, they just tear our teachers up. But I think there's a way we can do it.
Anyone else from the board?
Thank you.
Good evening. Eric Ward, council. I just want to give you guys respect and congratulations. My name is Jerry King, Jr., City of Pleasantville resident. Thank you for your hard work. These ordinances are in favor of that rescinding of ordinance number nine. I want to thank you for your hard work, your diligence. We know that you guys don't have an easy job, and inevitably somebody's going to be unhappy. You know, you can't make everyone happy. But just know and understand that all us concerned citizens in here, you know, we're, we're really concerned about the long-term, you know, ramifications that, in terms like that one that was proposed with how it would affect the city. And we want to just remind you that. And we want to just remind you that, you know, here again, it's government, other people, for the people, and by the people. And you have a certain fiduciary responsibility to regulate, honor the rights of the people. And if you can't do that, then it's time for you to step down, period. But, and that's the law. That's not our opinion. The Constitution, you know, means something. I know there's people even in Washington that are playing with it. But to some of us, it still means something. And, you know, so I just want to thank you guys, but I also want to ask you, now that that order has been rescinded, what are the, are you seeking, are you seeking private, public, you know, partnerships to fund that or grant fundings to? Because it's my understanding there's a multiplicity of grants out there that could do the same thing that that other ridiculous deal was going to do. What are the alternatives that we're considering to, to get that same work done on the sewer? You know, if, if you had addressed that.
The order hasn't happened, we sent it.
Sure, I'll, I'll speak with them.
You said the order hasn't happened, rescinded?
Yeah, we haven't yet.
It's on that second reading. Okay, I'm sorry.
Well, you know, I heard you talk about the multiplicity of grants that are out there. You know, that's a shot in the dark. We don't know what we might get or what grants we might have. And honestly, there is no way that those grants are going to do what we were going to do with the money that we're going to get or the way we had this thing set up. So you cannot put those two in the same, you know, breath when we talk about them because there's no way that we're going to maybe do what we're going to do with that, you know, with what you. What we might get is hard to grant.
Have you researched that?
Well.
Have you specifically definitively researched?
Have you researched it? Because you made that comment.
I have.
So where are the grants at? And you, since you have, since you have, since you have the.
Why do we have to talk in that tone?
Since you have the alternative.
I'm just trying to get clarity.
Yes.
Because you're, you're making this definitive statement, but I'm saying based on what? Your opinion or facts?
No, the numbers, the numbers don't match up. There is no way that we're going to get that amount of grants to do what this company was going to do. There's no way.
That's your opinion, that's not fact.
The numbers don't add up, Jerry. You asked me the question, that was my answer.
Well, the numbers in that contract didn't add up.
Well, that's what you said.
Sewer rates escalating every year for 10 years didn't add up.
Okay, well, we're not going to get into all of that, right? You asked the question. I don't agree with that. I really don't.
No, I just want to, I just want to declare that, that that's, that's your opinion. You're entitled.
Yes, and that's your opinion. So I agree. So it's our opinion.
Okay, but, okay, so it's my understanding that the order has not yet been rescinded.
We have a second vote coming up shortly on the recent. But what Mr. Loody, our, we call him our money honey over here, just spoke about was the 2.7%.
2.67.
2.67% for the bond to do the work. We already have plans to do the work. We're getting the money. We locked in the loan interest rate, and we will be proceeding to do the work.
Can I ask a question?
Mr. Loody, Mr. Loody, as far as with that grant or the, the loan money that we're getting, how, how much, how much work is that going to do?
It'll take care of DeKater, Angely, Prospect, Tunis, and Harrison.
So one-third? Is that about a third of the city, or?
No, not at all.
Is there five streets that are, right now we see a Darby?
Okay, so that's five streets. If you increase the sewer over the period, you could do five more. Okay, that's coming through the city with the same loan, with that same percentage. And then, I'm sorry.
I want to note this, just agenda items only.
We have another moment, ma'am. This means doing public hearing. We want to close our work session and get them on with the record meeting.
I just wanted, because we're not, we don't have order. Just, just please note, these ordinances that you do have concern or want to comment on is a public hearing. And that will be placed on the record for the public hearing for these ordinances. I know, but, I know, but we need to, we need order. So if you all have a comment opposing or agreeing with the ordinances, please do so for public hearing, because there will be hearings held for each ordinance. So right now, we're doing public portion for questions for agenda items. Ms. Priscilla, is it for agenda items? If you're saying that you're supporting it, do the hearing.
You know it is. I got my agenda item questions, Priscilla Noel.
Go ahead, dear.
Pleasantville resident, good evening, everyone. I had a question in reference to the Joker Field, where RFP sent out.
What was the question?
Where RFP sent out.
When you say the Joker Field.
Yes, because 2.2 million was in the bill list. That's, the bill list is on the agenda. With 2.2 million, something to tune to that? I think she referred to the budget.
That's just red.
You're talking about the budget? The budget assumption is $38,000 for a clean community, so that's not.
Did the numerator mention the Joker Field?
For the dollar bill list, nor on the agenda. I'm trying to understand. She's referring to Spyglass. Spyglass does not have a bill on the bill list for $2 million. Unless I just don't see it. So I need to clarify.
So what was discussed? That was part of the agenda or no?
I don't know what you're referring to, because I'm trying to get.
I'm really talking about the amount of grant that we're due, that we can, from the green acres and the state that we've had the last 15 years, the total 2.2 million dollars to help do that through.
And that's on the agenda?
No.
No, it's not on the agenda?
It's in part of the bill list.
Yes, for $7,363,000.
Okay, so, where RFP sent out for the company?
He's the reason for the company, for that company.
Yeah.
That cost, I think it's a little over $7,000, what you're referring to on the bill list. That's soft cost for the work that was done. I think it was environmental work. The developer is Spyglass, which was named by this council. And you don't have to send it out for RFP once you name a developer to do the work.
Okay, as far, so it's testing on the agendas? Testing, we're talking about testing, agenda?
COVID test.
COVID test. Okay. The guidelines have been updated, and they've been updated constantly. CDC. Why weren't testing procedures updated accordingly?
Our testing procedures are updated.
Because according to the CDC guidelines, it says if you're fully vaccinated and have all your shots, you do not need to quarantine for close contact.
We have the policy in place, and it's according to.
So I'm just trying to figure out, you know, as Councilman Thomas, $18,000. And I'm curious as well.
That is why we're asking it to be tabled so we can find out what the testing involved, because I, it certainly is, probably is not any present testing or current testing.
Ordinance number nine, is there any legal ramifications for the rescinding of this ordinance? You should be prepared this time, solicitor.
The answer is, there can be legal ramifications for any action a council takes or doesn't take.
Specifically for this one?
Again, I do not know what legal ramifications might follow from this. It's within council's authority to take action on the ordinance. Council has been advising, we've had discussions about different possible outcomes. That happens in executive session. No, not in public session.
Are they legally bound? The City of Pleasantville is legally bound to this agreement?
That sounds like a different way of asking the same question. All legal issues and all legal applies that I have to share with council, is shared with council in executive session.
So the public's not privy to that, even though ordinance related to those things is up for vote?
Same as happens with everything you can do in executive session. First, no matters might be discussed back there, but they don't discuss in public. Contract negotiations can be discussed there and not up in public. Attorney client privilege matters are discussed in executive session only.
Okay.
Expired. Anyone else in the public? Did anyone? Yes.
Good evening, everyone. Olivia Colly, resident of Pleasantville. I too am here to speak about ordinance number nine. It is clear that over the several years, that information that you had gotten at one point has changed, or at least your opinions on it has changed. I applaud the strength and the bravery of the city council people who were willing and able to listen to the information that you've heard in private session that we're not privy to, that you're able to stand up despite others trying to dissuade you. So I really appreciate the fact that you are willing to be your own person. Thank you.
Anyone else in the public? I'd say most of the public. On the favor? Now it's open for discussion. Councilwoman Thomas?
Nothing at this time.
Councilwoman?
Nothing at this time.
Guess I have something I'd like to share from the fire department. This is happy stuff. We received a letter to the fire department, I mean, to Mrs. Peyton, about the fire department. It says, "I'm writing you today to commend some employees on a job well done. On the 15th of June, 2022, the Pleasantville Fire Department was dispatched to assist. Dispatch updated us and stated that a dog was stuck under a shed. I proceeded to the address. I was almost to the street on my way to work. I met with the residents, and the owner of the Yorkie was distraught and worried about her dog. The dog was scared into not moving. The owner, in an attempt to help her dog, used a broomstick to coat the dog to move. Unfortunately, this was counterproductive and, and, excuse me, counterproductive, and the fire department and animal control intervention was needed. I contacted Cheryl Jones and requested for Pleasantville Animal Control to respond. The department engine arrived on scene, and determination was made to lift the shed using airbags. Animal Control arrived on the scene with Cheryl and Taylor Jones." That's our animal control operative, person and her daughter, Cheryl and Taylor Jones. "We informed them of what the idea was, and they both agreed. Fire department and animal control equipment was moved into place, and the lifting operation began. Under the command of provisional captain Paul Gregory, the teams were in place with safety spotters and lifted the shed. The animal control team and additional firefighters, Thomas Trippichin, Felix Borges, and Peter Libretti were able to safely and successfully extricate the Yorkie out. The cooperation and teamwork was shown, was outstanding, and proved how professional our employees are. The city has three very happy residents. The dog was reunited with its owner, and no property damage." For our firefighters, thank you. I just thought it was good for you to know that because when there's something that's wrong, you guys let us know, and we get letters like this, not all the time, but when we get them, we like to share them with you to let you know that it counteracts, you know, the things you make here to snack to.
I'd say this is graduation season. So many graduates. Congratulations to all the graduates, whether it be middle school, high school. Today, I participated in Ida Institute's first graduation from, not their first graduation, because they've been in business for, for a while, but the first graduation in the graduating class that participated, that was coming out of our old press, press building. It was at Sheridan. It was a great graduation, a great speaker, and opportunities of growth. Showing that, that, you know, there are other avenues. You just can't, we don't give up on it. We don't give up on our youth. The City of Pleasantville give up on the youth. There are other avenues of, of growth besides that, just that traditional way. And reminding everyone that there's entrepreneurship and, and, you know, everybody started from someplace that they had to actually grow. And congratulations to those at Ida Institute. And entertaining motion to adjourn this work session.
Motion. Second. All in favor? Aye. And I'll take a five-minute recess. All in favor?
I'm good.
Good. I want to take a five-minute recess myself and back to the restroom. Five-minute recess. Jerry McKinnon. City of Pleasantville, City Council, regular meeting. Today's date is June 22nd, 2022. The time is 8:05. This meeting has been duly advertised in the city's newspaper and performs with public public leaguer, otherwise known as the Sunshine Law. Would you please stand for an indication? Let's meet in July, United States of America, and two republics for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with a living and justice for all. Rocco?
Swan. Davenport.
Present.
Pevalaro.
Here.
Thomas. Rutter. Camona.
Present.
Korea.
Present.
Sishto.
Present.
All of the tickets.
Let's say a motion for the dispensary.
Motion, second.
Aye. Mary, you have any recommendations?
I have nothing. Thank you.
Okay, first on the agenda is ordinance number nine, public care will be held. Is vicinity ordinance number 1-2022? Public care and ordinance number nine?
Yes, yes. Now we have, at this time, we have a public care for.
Ordinance.
Ordinance number nine, excuse me.
122. It's a warning coming out.
Ordinance number nine, excuse me.
I want to thank you for this meeting. We opened up with the Lord's Prayer. I just don't want you to put, put them on the shelf somewhere. You need to be right in the center because we got a lot of things happening tonight. I'm here because I'm a taxpayer, and I've always talked about communication is the key to everything. And I observed your meeting tonight. Every one of you up there should know what's on the bill list, should already know what the issues are. But when you come to a meeting, you, you ask the questions, so you don't know. You have to change that, that way of how you do business. When you council sit up there, you know everything on your agenda. You don't have to question. Okay? Tomorrow is graduation for our high school students and our eighth graders. All of you, council, are on the agenda. Just your names. I would love to see you there, every one of you. I would love to see you there. Because you are a big part in how the Pleasantville School District is to run, to tell you the truth. You are. And our kids need to see the leaders of this town. So I'm asking you, if you can't make it, please come. This ordinance, I'm going to go back a couple of years, 1998. You know where the Greyhound bus company is, Garage? Well, before the schools were built, as they were being built, there was nothing but trees in the forest and some houses. Company wanted to come in. Company wanted to come in and build a garage at that location. And I happened to become on the Board of Education. And the Board of Education, with Olivia Caldwell, Anita Hyman, we got together and said, "We don't want no building in front of our schools. Let's put our fields, let's put our fields in the front, like Lindwood." Okay? But no, it was too late. It all went through ordinance, uh, through, uh, zoning, and it went through planning, and it was done. It was done. And today, if we would have had opportunity to come to an ordinance, uh, zoning meeting, or, or planning board meeting, or even the, the council meeting, we would have told you, "Don't put no building in front of our buildings. Brand-new school." And a lot of you senior council people was on that board. I'm asking for this to be rescinded because I didn't hear anybody up there that really understood three and a half years or three years of planning this. All of you should have known exactly why three voted yes and four voted no. That's, that, and, and I heard, I heard from the president, I heard from Tony, but I didn't hear from councilwoman, um, Thomas. And I would like to hear today.
I'll talk to you afterward.
At the end.
Okay. Um, just to let you know, I lost my job fighting against that building. And, and it'll come out in my book. I'm writing a book. It'll come out in my book, but it was the leaders of the, of the township. Is it three minutes long? I would say, do not vote on anything. New board, new, new council people, don't vote on, vote on nothing. You don't know the whole story about it. You vote on it after you hear from the public. Thank you.
Anyone else? Three, three minutes, one second.
Good morning, Pleasantville Avenue. Uh, at the work meeting, I heard councilman Sishtrom talk about the work they have been going into, planning to, uh, find a deal to save the sewer system. And I say, "Council, you and your predecessors on council have been kicking the can down the road by keeping the fees the same since 2010 and diverting sewer fees from proper maintenance of the system and using those fees to keep from raising property taxes. Now you're in a panic mode and are looking for easy solutions. Those of you who supported ordinance one dash twenty-two and any other deals are blinded by the short-term gain of fifteen miles, fifteen million dollars a year, and then annual installments of a hundred thousand. Focus of any private corporation is profits. Corporate leaders will do anything to make sure the corporation's profits are the highest they can be. Bernard Capital Partners, the company proposing to take over the maintenance of the sewer system, has absolutely no interest in the citizens of Pleasantville. No matter what Bernard Capital Partners tells us, it will find ways to reduce what it pays the city, what it spends to repair the system, how much it raises rates beyond what it may promise using terms like, "We didn't realize the sewer system was so bad," or "Repair costs are higher than we anticipated." So Pleasantville citizens will end up paying a lot more for sewer service. Cities has ways to fund the repairs needed for the sewer system, such as bond issues, federal grants, and money from the federal infrastructure improvement funds, which was recently passed by Congress. And yes, it will probably raise rates for our sewer fees, but surely not as much as it would be if the system is managed by a private corporation. The sale, excuse me, the sale of, or concessions, or any other deals made to give ownership or maintenance of the sewer system to a private corporation must be rescinded, including ordinance one dash twenty-two. Thank you.
He said it all in a nutshell.
I have a question. Is our sewer system really that bad? Is it really that bad?
Yes.
Or is it that, um, dual, dual fuel Jenkins and Ken Adams, um, had buried their sludge on the ground? And, um, the, uh, containers, you don't know where they are, and it's contaminating the ground. Is that a possibility? And now this is a way of cleaning it up? I'm just asking a question because I read this somewhere. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yes.
You know what's going on. You know what you're doing. And you're killing the city.
Mark Hall, L.A., 1301 Broad Street, Pleasantville. So previously, I understand that Mr. Davenport said that we wouldn't get a grant that would be enough to fix our entire system. I propose we take a look, and you said you did two and a half years of research, but two and a half years maybe wasn't enough. And you didn't have enough information in order to look at it. And I think y'all should really go back and re-look at it. Look at it in a sense of doing it in a puzzle, in a piecework. Yes, I agree. We need to raise our sewer amount. Okay, I am a resident of Pleasantville, and I can agree with that. Okay? And what y'all showed me through this is y'all have not used the money properly that you've already had in order to take care of this. And so then it seems as though that you need this money now. You need money to replace the money that you've been using for the sewer. Because you've been using it for everything but sewer. Okay, so it seems that you're trying to grab some money from somewhere else to pay the, to put in position the money that you had for the sewer. But going forward, y'all need to take that money, increase, not that thirty-nine-year stuff. Because, and also, you're taking, you're taking up employment with little we had in Pleasantville, out of Pleasantville. So I really think that maybe you should get some ideas from your public. Hey, that two and a half years, we were in COVID-19.
What kind of research did they do?
And I truly believe, if you have faith as a mustard seed, that all things are possible. But if we don't sit down and try to work this out as one body, it's not going to work. So I pray that y'all rescind this, and y'all come together and ask for some solutions. Ask for some help. And thank y'all. Whatever y'all did for on yesterday, I wasn't going to come, but it was a good time. And I appreciate the resources that are still out there. Keep up what you're doing, but think about what you're going to do in the next vote for ordinance number nine.
Anyone else with a vote?
Jim Barkley, eleven two twelve Chaffon Avenue. Councilmember, I bring you greetings. And I want to salute you, and I empathize with your position. I know it's difficult to provide leadership, and I know it's challenging. So I'm not just standing here to beat you down that you are someone who makes wrong decisions. What I came with tonight is an appeal and an advice that will help with your legacy and that will help to inspire the people of the city. I know the intention you have to repair our sewer system, but if you sign a thirty-nine-year contract, it takes the control out of your hands. If you find other means, like increasing our sewage bill, we know it's a big punishment for us, but we know that the council still has the control. After some time, when things improve, you have the power to make adjustments because you have the control. But if you give it out for thirty-nine years, it's gone out of your hands. You can never control it again. So I came tonight to appeal to you, to just pull back this agreement and leave it alone. It will not help you. It will not help your people. It will just create bad feeling in our city and will create bad image for the governance system. So my appeal is, please, rescind this, our deal, send it back, and let us brainstorm to help our city. Thank you very much.
Anyone else with a vote?
Hello, everyone. Tim Jones again. Again, I, I like what, um, Mr. Barkley just said with regards to not coming here just to bask the city council. A lot of that's been going on over the last couple of months, and I'm sick of it myself. I'm glad to see we're coming to some right-minded decisions on these matters. I'm very glad to see that actually occurring at this time. Um, I attended a commissioners' meeting in February, pre, uh, before actually coming to any meetings regarding this, and I was kind of surprised to see that one of the commissioners from Hamilton announced that she received a three-hundred-something-thousand-dollar grant to study their sewer system. And I don't know of anything like that ever been done for our sewer system. It's been like the commercial said, "Your car's going to blow up. You better go buy a new car." That's all I keep hearing. And I know it's not that simple. And yet, I have never heard any sincere studies of our present sewer system to actually justify all the dire emergencies being talked about. You talk about the sewer system being a hundred years old. My home's a hundred years old, and it's not ready to crumble. You know, my home was built by Leeds, of Leeds Avenue fame. It's not crumbling. Well, with regards to getting, um, support for these things, I would really encourage you to seek, um, the resources of the county, state government. As I know some of you are doing. You know, but like I, like I said, when I can see a commissioner disbanding a grant for three-hundred-thousand dollars to study a sewer system, and we're just talking about stuff in the, the dire need, we're not thinking step-by-step on the matter. I don't know what's been transpired over the last two and a half years. Like someone said, um, Ms. Mubell? I'll get your name out loud and say it. Two and a half years, we were in COVID. I was, I was thinking about the city council. But here we are now. You're hearing from the public. A democracy is based on the will of the people, actually. In definition, that's what it means. The reposis, the, the requisite will of the people is what a democracy is. And so therefore, I appreciate that the democracy is actually coming into play with this city council. And going forward, another good thing that's coming out of this is you will not be alone anymore. You will never be alone anymore because these people know that we need to be involved with our city council, whether you're there or here. We have responsibility, and we will live up to our responsibility moving forward. Thank you.
Dale Archie, resident of Pleasantville. I, I, I have kind of a weird situation that I'm in right now. I want to address, but you heard my comments before. Not for this, and I wasn't for it from the beginning. Also, I was talking to a gentleman that was making mention of grants. I forget his name. What is his name again?
Vitale, so.
Yeah, Vitale. So I asked him a question in reference to a document that I had read to you guys before, in reference to grants that would take care of each and every street that was brought up as far as it needed to be repaired. Also spoke in reference to as far as the, um, Department of Transportation, finishing your project as far as that restoration in which you dig the streets up. But, uh, and also, before I forget, I want to thank everybody that's in favor of rescinding this, that's on council. Um, my biggest thing is, I would like to talk to the public as far as that's not here, that hasn't been here. People, you need to get out from your comfort zone. You need to come out, and you need to talk to council and come to these meetings. And it shouldn't just be us that keeps coming, that's, that's here in this meeting. So I'm pleading to everyone that might be at home, sitting on their couch, having a beer, having a soda, having a glass of water, saying, "I have to go to work. I can't go to the meeting." Every month out of the whole year, you got one month or one meeting that you can attend. So I'm saying to the residents of Pleasantville, the mayor needs your help, council needs your help. What do they need from you? Your opinion. If you stay home, what's going to happen? They're going to do the best they can. And because they don't hear from you, they're going to move things forward. It might be for you or against you. You have to come out of your comfort zone. If I say Pleasantville's majority, uh, one time it was minority, uh, maybe Afro-Americans, I don't know what it is now. But I'm talking to everybody that lives in Pleasantville. I don't care what your nationality is, what your race is. I don't care where you came from. I'm talking to you from love. Come out of your comfort zones and come and sit in these council meetings because the mayor of Pleasantville, she's doing the best she can. Council's doing the best they can. They need your help, even the police chief. He needs your help. He needs your input. But if you stay home, Pleasantville will not rise. The citizens that's in this room right now want to see the best of Pleasantville, and Pleasantville can be a whole lot better than what it is as time moves forward, but it needs your help. We need to put Pleasantville on the map so throughout the United States, they know Pleasantville, New Jersey is alive.
That's right.
Thank you.
Urban Miranda Rodriguez, seven thirty, New Maple Road, Pleasantville, New Jersey. City Council, from Fayetteville, Louisiana, to Cumberland County, to here in Pleasantville, New Jersey, controversy follows Bernard Capital. This is not a coincidence, and it only takes a simple Google search to find that information. Bernard is an entity that needs to make money. And the public has expressed that over and over for months, and even tonight, that they will do whatever it takes to make a profit, not for themselves, but for their investors. And they will do it by profiting off public utilities in American cities. Public utilities that are public for a reason and should never be at the mercy of money. Council President Sishtrom and Councilman Davenport, it concerns me that you somehow support this company, Bernard, in this city after we just recently witnessed Kent, Kent Rowey, an attorney for Bernard Capital and that other subsidy, uh, Bernard Capital and Pleasantville Environmental Partners. He said it himself. He would take whatever actions necessary to protect Bernard. Whatever actions necessary. So it concerns me that they are threatening to sue us even before they insert their claws into our city. And yet, here you are, talking about being ethical, talking about being reasonable. I see a behemoth threatening to sue our city, and you're still out there defending them. I want to unequivocally state my gratitude, exclamation to number one, Councilwoman Familaro, Councilman Swan, Councilman Carmona, and, and Councilman Correa for their actions tonight. They were brave actions. You were against really, really dark money investors, Bernard Capital, controversy, and you did the right thing, and you heard the public. So thank you for your previous vote, and I look forward to your vote here tonight. Thank you.
Anyone else with a vote?
Priscilla Noel. Okay, so I'm in favor of rescinding the order, but not for the reasons that everyone else has said. First thing is first, like the one citizen said. This administration, I don't know what you want to call it, has kicked the can down the road. The council, if no one knows, does not handle day-to-day operations. None of them handle day-to-day operations. Who handles day-to-day operations? The mayor, the city administrator. This guy, CFO, what'd y'all say? I say numerator, I don't know, the accountant. And with the help of a solicitor, they make the daily decisions. They decided, oh, we'll forego investing into the sewer. We'll forego and we'll take from the sewer pot and give to everything else. Right? So we should have an ordinance that restricts the revenue of the sewer to protect our asset. Because if you don't reinvest in the asset, you don't have one. That's the first thing. Did you want to say something, city administrator? You saw you shaking your head.
Oh, I'm gonna finish.
Okay. So when you're taking and you're taking and you're taking and you're not giving, you have a crumbling sewer system. You have things fall apart. You have not enough employees to pay for so that they can work and maintain it. You don't get to have upgrades. You don't get to do any of those things when you're taking it and, oh, I'm gonna pay for the firefighters. Oh, I'm gonna pay for the police. Oh, I'm gonna pay. Where is that money? Oh, there's no money because you're giving ten-year abatements to commercial ratables. That needs to cease. How are you gonna generate money if you're giving everybody a tax break who would be your biggest ratables? So we need to restructure and it involves holding accountable the day-to-day operators. They're the last resort, city council. So some of them gotta do what they gotta do, right? Where's the money gonna come from? We gotta get a quick fix because every year we're losing grants. Every year, things are getting ignored. Critical things are getting ignored. So you have some council members who are doing, making those decisions. You have other council members who see a different way. It's great that you've listened to the public. I do appreciate that. But we need to figure it out together and we need to keep coming.
Before you sit down, can I? This is public, but I have to address this. Before you sit down, I'd like to know where you get the information from. You said it's so definitive of how the meetings, I mean, how it comes to council.
Of what? Which part? Of the rates being suppressed?
You described who runs the day-to-day and that council has nothing to do with it. They just vote on it? Is that what you're saying?
No, ma'am. What I'm saying is, it's like similar to the school board. School board does not run day-to-day operations. The superintendent does. So you, equivalent to a superintendent.
But that's not how we do it.
Okay.
We have, we have commitments. And whatever we're discussing, that committee is what's in that discussion. And once the committee decides that it will or will not go forward to council, on the full council, that's when everyone decides. But no, it's not just the VA, the mayor, and the CFO.
So you're saying Pleasantville runs differently?
No, the committees.
It goes to committee.
With the council.
And then, then the committee decides whether or not it's gonna go to council. So as far as how the school board runs, we don't have anything to do with that.
I didn't say that the school board is saying equivalency of possession.
Well, I just explained to you how we do that. You know, how we go through committee.
Everything goes through committee?
When we have, unless it's administration, it goes through committee.
So who's the committee for the sewer?
This is, this is the committee, well, Councilman Davenport was the committee chair.
Who else is on that committee?
The committee is council. And let me just, if I can, clarify some things. You're entitled to your own opinion, but I think it's important that the audience is informed. And know that your opinion is not correct as it relates to the operations and the processes. As the mayor was trying to explain, probably ninety-nine point nine percent of what you see on our agenda items, they go before committee. And what that means is three selected council people on each of those committees, they're broken down to operate every aspect of the city. So you have a sewer committee, you have a streets committee, you have a finance committee, you have a committee for every aspect of the city.
Is that information public? I'm sorry.
After the committee discusses that information, then it's brought before full council. So that's how you get it. So the information in the committee session is deliberate, which means that it's not public record because you're still discussing things and it's not final until it gets here.
That's why the people who are in that committee.
Yes, that's. So what I'm trying to say is that, I do, I am responsible to run day-to-day operations. But when you talk about a concessionaire agreement or things of this nature, this is not day-to-day operation. This is not classified as day-to-day operation. This is a serious negotiation process that involves every person on this dais and every person sitting here. We started out discussing this matter at the sewer committee level because it's a sewer item. Then we created an ad hoc committee, which is a greater number of those people to bring others in. And we hired a, well, we didn't hire, we've already retained, who's our finance person to come in to help us with looking at these documents. And we have our attorneys. So the point that I'm really just trying to make is to clarify what you said, so the audience is not misled or the public is not misled. The day-to-day operations is not something that the concessionaire, that I as the administrator, nor the mayor, nor the CFO have the authority to bring before anybody and say, "This is something that we would like the city to do." What we do is once we get a concept or recommendation from the city council people, we do the back, the legwork on that and bring that information before them for them to further assess it.
That's not what I was saying. I was saying that the maintenance of the sewer is the day-to-day operation that has gotten into dire straits, that has led to them to bring that opportunity for you.
You did say that and you said some other things too, and I wanted to comment on those other things. But yes, we have admitted over and over, sitting here in these very meetings, that the can has been kicked way down the road because we were looking out for the pockets of our people. And so it got to a point where we said, "What should we do?" And this is how we started talking about even the sale of the asset and now we're talking about the concessionaire. But I don't vote, the mayor don't vote, we just provide the information.
Okay, word of advice, if you can't afford your own attorney, you shouldn't do the deal.
Don't even know what that means.
Anyone else with a vote?
Good evening, Jerry King, City of Pleasantville. Once again, thank you to council and mayor and city solicitor for your hard work. I just want to say that the city has a lot of resources, have a lot of intelligent people here. Who have years and years and years of experience in commerce, industry, military, law, accounting. And we're here at your disposal. We are resources that you haven't utilized. And I for one, I want to avail myself to you all. And there are people here that have tremendous experience, very articulate, very intelligent, very knowledgeable, educated. You know, that could be an asset to you guys, not just in this sewer process, but in the administration of the city as a whole. As the gentleman said earlier, it's a democracy. You know, we used to say teamwork makes the dream work. We're here, we're all a team. We have to cease the infighting and focus on the end goal. Of doing what's best for the city at the most reasonable cost, with the most efficient process to make it happen. It's not gonna be perfect, but I'm saying there's a lot of resources here. There's years and years of experience that can be at your disposal. And I want to avail myself to you guys in any way possible. And there's plenty of other people here with years and years of experience in education, law, commerce, industry, you name it. You guys don't know everything, right? You don't. We don't know everything. But it's like Martin Luther King said, "If we could sit down at that table with brotherhood and you got a piece of the answer and I got a piece of the answer, Tim has a piece of the answer, Sister Noel has a piece of the answer, boom! Problem solved." I avail myself to you.
I'm gonna say a couple things here, I think. First of all, to clarify Bernard Capital and some of these comments from my friend in the back of the room. We don't just show up anyplace willy-nilly and hand over solicitations and try to get people to do things they don't want to do. Particularly here, we're procured through an RFP process that y'all put out. We negotiated the contract with your attorneys and the administration. Like, once again, we've been here for a while, right? But I don't like the accusations and saying that people just slipped in here and do all this stuff. Plus, he's got two of the towns around. So for us, we understand why we're here. We understand what we've provided you guys, you know. For the most part, I think most folks understand most of it, not all of it. And it's a process for sure. But it's not like we just slipped in a town two weeks ago, right? So we've been here working for two years and I just wanted to clarify that.
Can you tell us who you were?
I didn't say anything about slipping, by the way.
Anyone else with a vote?
You can look back on the video and check that. Show me what I said slipped in. I can email it to you.
My name is Anna Quintana. Okay, I just want to say, I know that they said the bond that we're gonna get won't do everything that Barnhart says that they can do. But we have to look at it that this is a beginning. The bond is like fixing pieces together. Because we didn't go downhill all at one time. We went downhill over twenty years or more than that that this had. So we have to piece it together a little bit at a time and we work with the hardest, the worst streets. And once we get that part done, then we have to go back to the table and try to look for more money to finish the other part. It's a slow deal, but it's probably the right deal. Okay, we have to take the time because it took you all that time to take all that money and you can't put it back at one time. You can't fix it all at one time. You have to do it in pieces. That's all I'm saying. I'm saying that we start this way, this is a beginning. And then we look for something else later on down the line. But let's work as a team, listen to the people out here. They might know somebody who knows how to get somebody or knows somebody on one of those panels who can help us with something. I'm sure there's a lot of people out here willing to help Pleasantville if Pleasantville opens their mouth and say it. But I'm just saying, the Pleasantville residents, we are awake. And we're gonna keep an eye on everything going on. And if we don't like it, we're gonna say something about it. So we're gonna stand up. We support you, what you do. If you're doing something, you don't. We're here to listen. We're not here to badger you, but we're concerned about this deal. And that's all we're trying to say to you. We're just concerned about it. Thank you very much.
Anyone else with a vote?
Can I say something? Just to tag onto what she said. We are not here to attack you guys, but the body language, the responses, the cavalier attitudes that we get from the public because we're coming, because we're concerned taxpayers, I think it's unfair to us. We teach our kids that we're gonna fail sometimes, right? When you fall, you get back up and you try again. This deal's not gonna go through. Hopefully, it don't go through. Okay, you failed. Go back to the drawing board and start again, right? That's all we're trying to say to you guys. But y'all are like giving us attitude, you're getting combatant with us. We're taxpayers. You guys are public servants. You're at the mercy of us. So we shouldn't even have to deal with the attitudes that we're getting from y'all. And I think it's unfair for y'all to even consider yourselves public servants and give it to us like that.
Anyone else with a vote?
For the record, I totally agree with that.
It's crazy.
I totally agree with that. The body language, the aggression, I've spoken on it before, so I'm not gonna spend all my time spending talking about it. I think that what you should do from this point, instead of trying to find quick fixes and selling everything, we don't have nothing left but the sewage as it is. So what you need to be working on is trying to create streams of revenue for the city. So that you can afford to pay some of the things that need to be paid. Now, I've been living in Pleasantville since nineteen sixty-eight. And I have often on been involved politically or with the school board or the city. Ms. Peyton, you know this, you've helped me many times trying to do things, positive things for the city. That's what I think that you need to do. Try to create some streams of revenue. You have all these empty lots in Pleasantville doing nothing. You got that New Jersey Belt building, which you could buy, renovate, put something there, a tech school. You got that Kmart building, take that and make that a city skating rink. And use, create a room for vendors to come in and sell things. You rent that space there. You're making money. It's things that you can do that don't involve crushing us. As it is, our taxes have been going up year after year after year and property value, down, down, down. So even if we wanted to leave, we would lose everything. And for you to put this noose around our neck, so to speak, with this sewer deal. Well, I think you're gonna have a ghost town. So y'all could all just leave your job right now because you don't have nothing to do. You're not gonna have no income coming in, no revenue, nobody to vote for you, and nobody to pay taxes because everybody gonna blow this town. So that's what I, and as far as Tim goes, everybody's mad at him. I'm not mad at Tim. Because he shone.
Everybody should be mad at him.
He shone the light on what was done under the cover of darkness and I appreciate him for it. Because had he not done it, we would not have known it because none of y'all was shining the light for us in English, in Spanish, in first ward, in second ward. You just did it when nobody could come out the house to play. And then you want to throw that in our face, "Well, we've been doing this for two and a half years." Well, we weren't there. We should still know what you're doing. You need to be more transparent and you need to be more detailed on this slip that you give people so we know what you're talking about. Because we don't know what all these numbers mean all the time or these one-liners. We need to know what this means. Okay, I just think that that would make things better.
The audiences are available in the city clerk's office.
Okay, but we don't see this until we get here and then it's too late.
Or you could call me and.
Online? Okay, I need you directly to that because I have to look for it and not be able to find it. That's no problem. I appreciate that. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Also, for the record, those agenda items on the bottom right, both items states the committees that are sponsoring those items.
Thank you for listening.
Anyone else with a vote?
Lynda Carrington, resident of Pleasantville, I just want, for the record, to say that I appreciate those council people who rethought the idea and to go against this and to consider the residents of Pleasantville. I just wanted to say that Bernard Capital did its job. They did their job. Their job is to prey on cities that are in desperation of money. And on the people that lead the city who don't care about it, who have no regard for it. And on the people that lead the city who don't care about it, who have no regard for its residents. Yeah, I'm upset, again, because it looks like we can't trust all of you. We elected you to lead us. We didn't elect you to deceive us. That's... We elected you. We trusted you, that's why we put you in the position. But when you break that trust, now you gotta pay the price because it's hard to buy back the trust of the people. And when you think we forgot, we remember. Bernhard Capital did his job. It came in, slithered in, and with hopes of slithering out with the whole bankroll. Because somebody in the community was watching. I can't say it was the council people. And I know that everybody wanna praise you and everything and how hard you worked, but I'm here to tell you, you weren't working hard enough if you didn't see this coming. A snake is a snake is a snake. And if you don't know the difference between a snake and a turtle dove, we need to have some PD, professional development. I heard all of these residents get up and they spoke beautifully. Each one had their own opinion about what is happening. But council, you are the leaders and we're the followers. But when we're following you... Because if you're the leader and you running falling off the ditch, I'm not trying to fall in the ditch. I'm not trying to run off the bridge. With all your swelling words and your elaborations and your body languages, I got body language too. And it saddens me to think that some of you still wanna keep a deal that's rotten and stinky and deplorable and degrading to the citizens that you swore to protect and serve. Please stop telling me about your public servants. Please stop talking about that. You look hypocritical. Thank you. Hypocrite.
Anyone else from the public? Anyone else from the public?
Hi. This is a tough spot. I think it's body of laws, but this is a tough spot. And I'm hearing the people and I understand from the beginning what the struggles were to get this, to get something done for the city of Pleasantville. But there's a lot of hate words, there's a lot of stuff being said that just absolutely is not true. It just isn't. No one slithered in the town, invited the group in the town. I'm not the group, but you invited to group the town. You're city officials. I apologize, you're city officials. But in their defense, they did go two and a half years with advertising it and we did have meetings, public meetings, here right in the same room and no one showed. But let me rewind it a little bit. Let's rewind it just a little bit.
I never saw advertising on Facebook.
I can't tell you what you're saying. I can't tell you, I can't tell you how you're sitting.
Mr. Law, please go ahead, go ahead and speak.
It's the same way they get the information out for everything else. Everything else that they do, it happens the same way. There's a formula. There's a way that they do business. They followed every one of those protocols. All Bernhard Capital did was answer the RFP. That's it, along with American Water. You had two options. American Water wanted to buy your system for ten to twelve million dollars. And we offered to lease the system in a part, public-private partnership with you, with fifteen million upfront, another ten million dollars of repairs to your system, and then...
No more than! And in two years, we'd be paying twelve, fifteen years.
The gentleman knows as much as he does from the first place, we talked to each other on the phone. Nobody tried to hide anything.
But then I read the contract.
Excuse me, sir. You called, we got on the phone and you and I had a long conversation. I put you on the phone with the vice president of Bernhard Capital in the middle of the night. That's not hiding anything, sir. That's you and I having a conversation, a man-man conversation about what the facts really were. Excuse me, I told you what the facts really were. And then we got the vice president on the phone that night, nine thirty, nine o'clock at night, to make sure you were clear on what it was. And that's okay, right? That's okay. The object was for us to be as clear to everybody as possible. And we tried to do that. You didn't hear us coming in here yelling and screaming, you didn't hear us pointing fingers, we didn't do any of that. All we did was get the facts. Either you wanna hear the truth or you don't. The city officials are doing the best they can with the...
They can speak for themselves.
I understand, but we're doing the best. They're doing the best they can. I'm being interrupting the whole time.
Thank you for no thank you.
I apologize. I want the people to understand, this is very difficult. This is very difficult. You guys have a very difficult job and I get it, I understand it. And unfortunately, you're taking the brunt, Bernhard Capital's taking the brunt for something that you guys and we try to, you know, help the city with. You have a water line. Obviously, the people who are making these accusations and saying those things don't understand the condition of your water. Because if you did, then you'd be trying to do whatever you can to fix it, right? Because your system is in trouble, right?
Excuse me.
So, obviously, listen, I'm sorry, it's obvious... I can't talk.
Please don't interrupt him.
Can he turn around and speak to the audience, please?
I'll keep it short. Counsel, you have to make a decision based on what's best for the city of Pleasantville. And the people of Pleasantville, if you have your opinion, but my thing is, understand the condition of your system, understand where you really are, and understand that you were afforded two options. And I feel as well as a lot of council members who voted seven oh five times that this was the best option.
You're just trying to shut something down somebody broke their old one. I must address what he just said. He referred just to a comment I made. We had a conversation, I asked a question, and after asking Mr. um, um, Bernhard Capital, the vice president, his response to me was, your people voted for it. He never justified the answer to the question I raised.
Anyone else from the public?
No, I can't, he can't talk to the public and he hasn't had a chance to speak. He didn't have the three minutes.
He had more than three minutes.
Was it because you all were engaged?
Motion to close.
Motion to close what?
Public session.
Public session.
Public hearing.
Hearing for the...
Roll call Swan?
Yes.
Davenport?
Yes.
Fennelaro?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Kamona?
Yes.
Korea?
Yes.
Sistrum?
Oh, hold on, excuse me, I'm sorry.
I said a motion for roll call. Swan seconded. For roll call. Let me take it from the top. Motion from Swan, second by Kamona, for roll call. Because we already closed the, we already closed the public hearing. Swan for ordinance number nine, we're closing public hearing.
This is ordinance number nine.
Yes, ordinance number nine. Let's take it from the top. I need a motion to close public hearing.
Yes.
So, we're changing from Swan to Thomas and who's seconded?
Swan.
Swan, okay. We need a motion for roll call.
Motion. Second.
First Swan, second Fennelaro. Roll call.
Or what?
Or ordinance number nine, public hearing, the order number one. Swan?
Yes.
Davenport?
No.
Okay. Fennelaro?
Yes.
Thomas?
No.
Kamona?
Yes.
Korea?
Yes.
Sistrum?
Nope.
Four yeses and three noes.
Yes.
Okay, ordinance number ten, second reading, public hearing for ordinance number ten.
Motion.
Anyone from the public that'd like to come forward for ordinance number ten? Seeing on what I need a motion to...
Objection. Crystal Noel, I am in support of ordinance number ten. I've seen individuals, I don't know what age they are, they do appear to be young. They come onto the school property as the one gentleman was saying, and this is what I've observed them do on the Middle School High School property. They come through and they ride onto the yard of, in the back, where the school buses are, and then they ride through to the soccer field, baseball field area, all through there. And this is while our student athletes are on the field and they're, you know, having practice after school. This is when some of the residents are trying to do, I guess, outdoor activities such as use the basketball court on the campus of the Middle School and High School. And they will come through with these motorized bikes or what have you and disrupt. And it's alarming because you don't know, because of the condition and the state of everything now, what their plans are when they're riding through. So, I am in support of this and I would also go further to say, yes, these should be, these vehicles should be destroyed and never returned. And beyond them getting a citation, if they have an address and they're minor, then their parents should get a citation. I don't support in any type of jail or anything, but if you hit someone's pockets enough, then they will, it's where it goes. So, then they will find a way to not have that happen and maybe they'll comply. Thank you.
So, as far as ordinance ten, they fly up the damn block, even the cars fly up the damn block, all day, every day. Is there anywhere we can get some speed bumps on Frontwood Avenue? Especially near the football field, and I'm right there by our football field. We need speed bumps, we need humps, dips, or whatever we need to stop them from speeding up and down the block. One day, they was flying up the damn block, so, it was a car, he flew past so fast, the entire block stopped. Whoever was outside this day stopped looking this far, like, is he on I-95 or is he on Frontwood? Like, he literally had to be going about seventy coming down Frontwood Avenue. Could we consider that, why we considering impounding these, impounding, put some speed bumps that'll stop them? Because they'll do it really from Route Nine all the way down for as long as they can. We got kids that's darting from over across the street, kids all over the street. So, I support number ten, but I want to add to number ten that y'all can put the speed bumps on Frontwood Avenue, he said. Just like y'all did by the Red.
But that gentleman you talking about, ninety miles an hour down the street, I don't think he was listening, I want to give it to her.
You was out there that day, right? I thought that was you. All this time I was coming, I thought that was you. But yeah, that day that you stopped in the middle of the street and I was in front of my driveway, yes, that day.
Thank you.
Can I ask, for this ordinance number ten? I just want to ask a cheeky question. From what I seen, I can say what I seen on television, filled up with that same problem. Now, I don't know if the law says that what he said, that Jamie behind him as far as the law was legal, was not legal. Because they went through it, give them the bikes, impounding or whatever, did they was able to get the bikes back, and they said, they went back and did the same old thing. So, maybe, I don't mean no disrespect to you, maybe we can reach out to Philadelphia to see how they was able to do, that the law isn't totally different than Jersey. And Philadelphia, in reference to, they was able to impound these bikes. Because what they went through was somebody came and bought the bikes and the guys got the bikes back and they right back at it again. So, they said they was trying to just hurry around, over the pound, and somebody get the bike, right back to the streets. So, they said this year, what they were doing, they would destroy these bikes. And if there's nothing against the law in that Jersey, if you don't destroy the bikes, you just gonna be going through this thing day in and day out. And I know the force isn't that big because Pleasantville have enough money, but no disrespect to you. So, if you don't impound the bikes, you never gonna get anywhere. Somebody just talking about the gas station. I don't think they can do that legally. If they can, great, but I don't think you can. Because if I got a bike and I'm going to get gas, you can't give me gas. So, I think that would be a problem too. I think the main thing is, if the individual is violating the law, and I guess if you have ordinance, this stipulation is that it will support you. If they violating the law on these bikes, then that bike gets impounded and gets destroyed. And that stops everything in a nutshell. So, I'd say, maybe you talk to those on legal aspects that can give you the guidance as far as what you can do and can't do. And, you know, you guys with ordinance, ordinance, to stop it because it's a hazard and it's because, like you said, safety, which is first, safety is first. So, not only bikes getting killed, but pedestrians getting killed when they not even being chased by the police. See, this thing is so serious, not just in Pleasantville, it's all over. But we gotta do something, because like I said, I meant what I said. I'm for Pleasantville to get on the map and be recognized throughout the United States. I'm not here to tear it down, I'm here to help build. See, that's what Mr. Archie saw about, to help build Pleasantville, not tear it down. I was here when the banks was here, I seen the banks go, why did the banks leave? See, we need the banks back in here, like somebody said. We need to stop giving out our dollars to get individuals to come in and build, but they get the tax break. Certain pretty time you get the tax break after that, y'all give and start paying up now. See, that helps us out. See, we gotta bring money back in. You gotta go outside. If you gotta work in Margate, if you gotta work in Trenton, I'm coming to you. I wanna know how you did it and bringing these back here. We need lights in Pleasantville, that's gonna happen. The whole Pleasantville gonna be lit up like Atlantic City. Is it gonna cost Pleasantville some money? No, right? It's a grant. Grants gonna take care of that. See, that's what these grants worth. You gotta start attacking the grants. If you got a good grant writer, utilize that. Taxpayers' dollars come down the road later on if you need to. Now, going back to the sewer thing, if you just took my money to raise the sewer bill, here's another thing. Once you raise it and it gets fixed and you still got sewer bills, money coming in for the bills, bring that joker back down. Show the residents of Pleasantville that you care about it. This is real. If you raised it to accomplish something, once you accomplish it, bring it back down because you're still getting dollars from the sewer bill. Amen?
So, what is the motion? Okay, so, ordinance number ten, providing for impoundment of all tarantula vehicles and dirt bikes operated on public streets, highways, and right-of-way violation of NJSA thirty-nine forty, you can see that's seventeen. I need roll call. That's Swan. Wait, that bike, because last time I did it, you... Davenport?
Yes.
Fennelaro?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Kamona?
Yes.
Korea?
Yes.
Sistrum?
Yes.
Ordinance adopted. Ordinance number eleven, first reading, establishing and operating a complete and green streets policy.
Necessary motion.
Roll call Swan?
Yes.
Davenport?
Yes.
Fennelaro?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Kamona?
Yes.
Korea?
Yes.
Sistrum?
Yes.
ordinance moved to second reading, scheduled July the eighteenth. Resolution one twenty-three, approving the renewal of preliminary retail distribution license for twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three term.
Motion.
Roll call Swan?
Yes.
Davenport?
Yes.
Fennelaro?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Kamona?
Yes.
Korea?
Yes.
Sistrum?
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution one twenty-four, approving the renewal of preliminary retail assumption of licensees for the twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three term.
Motion.
Second.
Roll call Swan?
Yes.
Davenport?
Yes.
Fennelaro?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Kamona?
Yes.
Korea?
Yes.
Sistrum?
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution one twenty-five, providing for budget insertion into the twenty twenty-two budget.
Motion.
Second.
Roll call Swan?
Yes.
Davenport?
Yes.
Fennelaro?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Kamona?
Yes.
Korea?
Yes.
Sistrum?
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution one twenty-seven, authorizing the city to execute an agreement with Exxon Enterprises Incorporated for body cams.
Motion.
Second.
Roll call Swan?
Yes.
Davenport?
Yes.
Fennelaro?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Kamona?
Yes.
Korea?
Yes.
Sistrum?
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution one twenty-seven, endorsing the adoption of green building practices for civic, commercial, and residential buildings.
Motion. Second.
Roll call Swan?
Yes.
Davenport?
Yes.
Fennelaro?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Kamona?
Yes.
Korea?
Yes.
Sistrum?
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution one twenty-eight, endorsing sustainable land use pledge.
Motion. Second.
Roll call Swan?
Yes.
Davenport?
Yes.
Fennelaro?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Kamona?
Yes.
Korea?
Yes.
Sistrum?
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution one twenty-nine, adopting a green ground-to-maintenance policy.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Roll call Swan?
Yes.
Davenport?
Yes.
Fennelaro?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Kamona?
Yes.
Korea?
Yes.
Sistrum?
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution one thirty, supporting the New Jersey Wildlife Action Plan.
Motion. Second.
Roll call Swan?
Yes.
Davenport?
Yes.
Fennelaro?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Kamona?
Yes.
Korea?
Yes.
Sistrum?
Yes.
Resolution approved. Next, I need a motion to approve the buildings.
Same move, second.
With the exception?
Except the COVID testing bill?
Yes.
So noted. Roll call Swan?
Yes.
Davenport?
Yes.
Fennelaro?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Kamona?
Yes.
Korea?
Yes.
Sistrum?
Yes.
Motion approved. Next is public portion.
Next is the public portion, mayor from the public. She's speaking at this time.
Good evening. It's been a long night. I just want to say, yesterday was beautiful. I didn't want to go, because I was tired, but I'm glad I did, I had a good time. Also, it was very good to see Mayor Ward. We had our fifth grade celebration, all the schools this week have been doing that. Um, I just want to say thank you to all of you. I know it's hard, especially my husband, Mr. Sistrum, caller, your hearts were in it. Your heart was in it too, Mr. Swan, Joanne. You just want the best for the city, and you prayed on it. I don't know what happened, but things are what it is. We'll get through it, we'll try some other ways, but I just want to say thank you. And it's my grandson's birthday, so let's hurry up and get out.
Excuse me, can I ask one question? Um, I just have a question about this right here, I don't know how I got by without me asking. What is, um, the Sustainable Land Use Pledge, what is that?
It's a, it's a policy that Sustainable Jersey asks all municipalities who participate in a sustainable program. It's a, um, certification program where you get points for your municipality being sustainable, like green initiatives and things of that nature. So it's just a pledge saying that we would, in all of our initiatives, look for effort to be sustainable.
Okay, David Carrington, again. Um, Mayor Ward, you wrote, um, I'm sorry, you read a letter concerning, um, our Pleasantville Fire Department, earlier, okay? I just want to, um, put on record that our Pleasantville Fire Department, our Pleasantville Police Department, that's how we say it, that's what we do, that's what they do, okay? Um, two years ago, my wife had an upper respiratory condition, and, uh, firefighter Dansby was right on, okay? Um, and some of the other firemen at the Pleasantville Fire Department. They are a great bunch of guys, I want that to be put on record. But my question is, how safe are, are our firemen? My question is, how safe is the fire department? And I want to know, is it true that our firemen are working in horrible conditions at that firehouse? In regards to, um, urine and sewage, pipes, um, bursting, they, they having to fix their own repairs, um, the carcinogen levels are high from the trucks. How safe are our firemen? Is that true? That, that firehouse is a hazard? And our firemen are unsafe? I'm just asking the question.
No, it's not, it's not, there were a lot of issues, issues, and issues were addressed, they brought forth, issues, the issue were addressed. And some of the issues that they had to straighten out, they had to straighten out themselves within, within themselves, and some of the practices they were doing. But the, the firehouse is safe.
Okay, so the weight room is back where it used to be?
No, the firehouse is, the firehouse is safe, and there's some restrictions at this particular time.
Okay, I don't understand what that means.
It means the work is not complete.
Mr., 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 Minister?
Yeah, the firehouse is deemed safe, um, and, uh, as Councilman Sistrum stated, there was some issue, like there's issues in most older buildings, um, and all of those things have been remediated or addressed. And one of the things that we put back into place that was lacking due to the practices of the fire department is their maintenance schedule. So, um, everything is up to code, the basement is restricted. Um, it has been remediated, but it's, it's restricted because we have some pending issues as it relates to allegations to the basement. So the best way to deal with that, until that matter is, uh, resolved, is to keep that area closed off, but it's safe.
Okay, um, I've been a lifelong resident here in Pleasantville. For those of you who don't know, Pleasantville used to have a movie theater, Pleasantville used to have, uh, four or five banks, Pleasantville used to have two supermarkets. Pleasantville used to have a department store, right? Main Street was a flo, was a, was a flourishing, um, 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 business.
Yes.
Right? We need to get back to that. We need to get back to that. And how do you get back to that? First of all, we have to take care of our youth and our senior citizens. You guys have inherited the curse of very bad council, um, people. You really have. In regards to the Pleasantville Jokers. In the seats that you're sitting in right now, very horrible things have been done to the Pleasantville Jokers, just so that they can function. Case in point, before Woodland Avenue was torn down, our kids had to go out there just for three, for thirty-five, thirty-seven hundred dollars. Had to go out there and clean up the old Woodland Terrace. And what did he, and what did they clean up? Well, they bagged up rubbers, they bagged up bullet casings, they bagged up syringes, they bagged up knives, and a couple of them bagged up guns, for thirty-seven hundred dollars. No other city does that to their kids. No other city, but Pleasantville. But Pleasantville. The second year, we had to clean up the, um, the old bus station. Same thing, right? I'm not done, and whether you hit it or not, I'm still gonna talk. All right? When you take care of your kids, things happen. You will flourish, when you take care of your, your elderly, watch, your, 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 the business of Pleasantville will flourish. The money was, is going to come in, but when you turn your backs on the youth, things like this happen. There were times when that new field was put up, I was there, the Pleasantville Jokers were not allowed to play on that field until, and a business administrator said it was okay to play. Our, uh, the Pleasantville Junior Joker's football field and the house needs assistance. Stop turning your backs on the Jokers. We're taking more kids off the street than the wreck. Than the wreck. I've been down there for almost thirty years. I know what I'm talking about. If you want to know Pleasantville Junior Joker history, come talk to me. When the city, I understand the Jokers are not part of the umbrella of the wreck. I understand that, but that doesn't mean you can't help. That doesn't mean you can't support. These kids are in need, and I wish this board, this, this, this city council will break the curse. Will break the curse in helping the youth of this city. And it's not just about the Pleasantville Jokers. However, we've been around for, for what, over fifty years? We're always in the playoffs, we're always in the championship game. These kids worked hard to get to their positions, to get to their, to their, uh, success. We need help. Break the curse. When Mayor Dix was in office, the Pleasantville Jokers had everything they need. Well, now he's gone. He's gone. When we took over, we had to fight. We had to fight the Jenkins, we had to fight the, uh, 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 the Fatsils, we had to fight the, um, the, uh, what's that appliance store on, um?
Art Hammer.
Art Hammer's. Where they would give up thousands and thousands of dollars, we got maybe twenty-five, thirty, maybe a hundred dollars in support. Our kids need help, they need support. That's all I got to say, please support the youth of this city.
Anyone else from the public?
And you cutting me off?
I have a suggestion. I have a suggestion to what he's talking about, as far as the Jokers needing support, and the Jokers needing, you know, probably a better field equipment, whatever it is they need. If Atlantic Cape Community College wants to come in here and put a satellite in here, why don't they sponsor the, the Jokers, like Rutgers sponsored, sponsored the Atlantic City Dolphins? And I noticed that, because my son played in dirt with holes, he can't, he's, one leg is shorter than the other one, right now today, from playing on that field that didn't have no grass in it. So, and it's a lifelong, it, it, nothing can be done about it. So, his injury. So what I'm saying is, if these people are gonna come in and they want something from you, get something from them. Have them sponsor it, like Rutgers sponsor, do you see that beautiful field the Dolphins got?
Ms. Brown, can I say something to you?
Yes.
We just voted to tip us, um, a company out of here that was going to do that. That same thing that you just said.
Tony, I don't want to hear nothing else about the sewage. I don't care what they was gonna do. What they were gonna do with the sewage is worse. What they were gonna do with the sewage is worse. I don't want to pay twelve hundred and fifty dollars a year to flush one toilet. I'm sorry, that's, that don't work for me.
All right.
I adore, my name is Gordon Pratt, known as Coach Gordon, and obviously I represent the Jokers. Now, I'm gonna start off by saying, uh, piggybacking off what Coach Dave said. When I played for the Jokers in the early eighties, I know Mayor Dix, Councilman Maxwell. You know why I know these people? And I remember them, because they was in my concession stand. Mayor Dix never missed a Pleasantville, Atlantic City game, home or away, he was always on our sidelines. Mayor Maxwell worked in our concession stand, I mean, uh, Councilman Maxwell worked in our concession stand. These, oh, these, I remember them now, because they were frequently in my life, because I played sports all year long in Pleasantville, and they were always there. Mayor Dix used to be in the announcer booth for our baseball games. Like, this is why I know these people. Mayor Ward, no disrespect, my kids have no clue who you are. They don't know you from a can of spray paint, no clue whatsoever, not one. Okay, they have no clue. Now, just like I told them outside, the reason the citizens of Pleasantville didn't like the way the sewage thing went down is because it was a tit-for-tat gesture. Oh, if we get the contract, okay, then we'll help out, and okay, now we're part of the contract, and we do the field. Nah, do the field first. Do the field first. See, then we can swallow an increase or something, because we see y'all are giving back before you even had the contract. See, you did, it's easier pill to swallow. When we see the increase with that, and they did just redo the whole part, and bought all the kids this, and took all the kids to the wreck, and they, they are building this for the kids, and they are doing this for the kids, then it's an easier pill to swallow. But that's not how you did it. They did a tit-for-tat, okay, if we're voting, then we get the contract, then we'll do the field. Nah, that's not how this works. Pleasantville isn't no big city town. If we were, this was a movie, we'd be the little town where everybody knows everybody. We don't have the casinos and stuff like Atlantic City, and I'm gonna tell you right now, hats off to Matt Marty Small, he came up with an idea. Regardless of who backed him or helped him, he came up with an idea. The idea worked.
Who was that idea?
That, that, that all-black ball, all the proceeds went to the, went to the kids', uh, athletic, uh, programs, and all the youth programs in Atlantic City. And that was a half million dollars. That was a half million dollars. I'm, I'm just trying, I'm just trying, I'm not saying you gotta raise, I'm not saying you gotta raise that million dollars. I'm just saying, what's your plan? What's your idea? Because other than my man right there, I don't know who none of y'all are. And Mr. Swan, glad you cut his bread, but I don't know who none of y'all are. I know him, you don't know why I know him? Because when we came to the Joker's with the contractor, in his suit, he went and crawled underneath the, in the crawl space of the Joker's, to inspect the beams with the contractor. That's why I know him.
There you go.
I don't know none of you, none of the rest of y'all. None of y'all. I've never seen none of you at the Joker's there. Never in the concession stand. I've been there for six years, never seen none of you in the concession stand.
All my kids came through the Joker's.
I'm not talking about your kids coming through the Joker's. You know what I see right now? You about kudos and pats on the back, so I'm not even speaking to you. All right, so now, 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 like I was saying, now listen, like I, nah, 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 just like you gave my man extended time, I'm giving extended time. So now, listen, like I was saying, like I was saying. We have a bill right now, we're a nonprofit organization, but because we're not under the wreck umbrella, we gets nothing. We asked to use the vans for away games. Got two beautiful bus white vans in. We asked to use the vans for away games. We'll get CDL drivers, like, we respect them, do background checks. We got them all over the place, parents and, uh, coaches. We asked to use the vans, transport the kids back and forth to a away game, for the parents that don't have cars. What y'all tell us? None.
Gordon, can I just stop you right there to explain why that was a no, just why it was a no?
Okay.
Seriously, you're saying a lot, as everybody does when they come up here, and I think you gotta spend a lot of time trying to just make sure that you guys are informed. The two buses that you guys are inquiring about are senior citizen buses, they were provided to the city with a grant, and can only be used for those purposes under the guidelines.
The two white vans at the wreck? No, the two white vans at the wreck.
Can you, can you, wait, I'm trying to tell you about the transportation.
You said the buses, I said the two white vans at the wreck.
Two white vans, vans cannot be used for transportation for children. Initially, I, I predates me as to when they got those, uh, those vehicles, but we asked to.
I used to ride that van to boxing tournaments.
I used to ride that van to boxing tournaments.
It was not, um, I don't want to say legal, but it was not permissible. So for, um.
Sherman used to take all of the boxing tournaments in those vans.
I understand. I'm not saying that. I'm trying to tell you that you used to do it. What you used to do, you no longer can do because it's not permissible. What the city has been trying to do recently was to get a van that could be utilized for, specifically for the youth. But the transportation that is in place right now, we can't transport kids in those vans and we can't transport the kids in the senior buses.
Okay, all right, well, listen. We going to talk about facts? We going to talk about facts. I took this picture. We had that meeting at the end of February about the conditions of everything that was around. That was the end of February. We had that meeting with the contract. I think you was there, I think you was at that meeting also.
Gordon, you wasn't at the initial meeting.
Who, who, no, who wasn't there?
I was there.
Who was there? I'm the head of football. I don't miss a meeting.
I was there at the meeting.
I don't miss a meeting. League meeting, council, I don't miss.
I'm not here to urge you. But we came up with a myriad of issues that needed to be done at the Joker's field and at that Max Man's field.
And I'm going to tell you what was said by you. Okay, listen, I'm saying what's up, like, now, listen. I, I was at that meeting. Okay, then I was at that meeting. This hall, listen, one more fact. I'm going to put one more fact.
So you're not going to allow the public to know what we're doing?
No, no, I'm going to tell you what was said. This, this, this is a fact. That this hall right here was packed in by birds, whatever, and squirrels and stuff was getting in our concession stand, eating our, eating, eating our food. Let me explain that to you. This was in February. Said it was going to be fixed. I took this picture June eighth. This hall was still there. Now, hold on, wait, wait, wait. Now the sink, now the sink, the sink spot was also off since February. Since February, since that meeting. Said it was going to be fixed. Took this picture June eighth.
Gordon. Can't allow it.
No, you can't allow it.
No, Gordon.
Okay, I'm going to, I got you, I got you. All right.
We.
You said facts.
I'm giving you the facts because this council passed, uh, bill list months ago where we, uh, had invoices on file where this work is, should have been done. Now, I don't know about that hole because I was standing there and I looked at that hole and I told our guys to make sure that it was fixed. It was reported back to me that it wasn't fixed. You don't have to come to this forum to come up here with phones and talking about facts. You pick up the phone and you tell me that something wasn't done so we can follow up on it.
No, that's what we do. No, no, no.
No, that's not what you did. I haven't seen you since, since February.
No, 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 no. I don't, I don't make the phone calls. I see, I see we're the chain of command. Our secretary, surround me.
That's it, that's it. That's Gordon, that's it.
She was in civil negotiations.
That's it, that's it. Gordon, that's it. Come on, Gordon.
I have legitimate questions about things and that's not fair because of one citizen. It's, it's really not fair.
It is simple. Any questions you have, please forward it to either the city coordinator.
But the same, the same city clerk, who's the city clerk?
I'm here.
Okay. Because anytime somebody asks a question and it's directed to the business administrator, like Ms. Carrington said, it's like, oh, call me and then nobody answers. So that's why I do this as a forum.
I've never got a phone call from you.
You haven't got a phone? You called?
No.
Are there any grants? Are there any grants to convert vehicles, to city vehicles from electric to natural gas? This is not right. This is not right. They don't answer those. They don't answer any questions.
We need a question and I have to address it for you. You say that every time. She comes to her counter all the time.
Has she got any questions now?
All right, well, she, she knows my office. Please see me.
I don't think that's, that's, that's not right because you don't want things to happen. Y'all pose the public portion. This is some bull crap. And I'm going to say that because I would never lose my cool, but y'all are really getting me out of my character. Y'all bunch of.
Okay, so next is comments from council and city council.
I don't have nothing at this time.
Close the meeting.
Yes.
This is crazy.
Anything at this time? Anything at this time?
Everybody, thank you for coming. Have a blessed night.
Mayor, anything at this time?
No, thank you for coming. Have a good night. No, I have to say something. As far, yes, I do have something to say. As far as Marty Small and his ball, Marty was able to have his gala. When I came, and that's how he was able, because I did, I supported that. That's how he was able to be able to do the sports events that he did when he did a couple of weeks ago. When I won my election, I couldn't have a gala because I was COVID. But once you have, that is the biggest fundraiser that any, uh, mayor ever has. And you're able to do whatever you want to do with the funds that you raised.